Yep.
All right, cool. All right, I'm going to call to order a special meeting of the planning commission. Martin, can you do your call?
I'll be glad to. Chair Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chair Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioner Harden is not here. Commissioner Harper?
Yeah.
Commissioner Malia?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Reese?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart is not here. Commissioner Witty is not here. Planning and building manager Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now we've got time for a public comment on any consent agenda, which is just the minutes or any non-agenda items. So if you have anything to talk to us outside of the Rogers Farm discussion later on, now would be the time to do that. So if you are an attendee and want to speak to a non-agenda item, you'd utilize the raise hand feature in your Zoom. Do we have anybody who's audio only? I can't tell, let me see here. There's one phone call listener, and if you're on the phone, what is it, Martin? Star nine?
Star nine.
Star nine, so if you're a phone call listener, you can raise your hand with star nine. But I'm not seeing any, anybody who wants to speak to a non-agenda item. So with that, we'll move on to the minutes of the June 2nd, 2020 meeting. We have minutes, draft PC minutes from June 2nd. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Was that Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Commissioner Harper, second, all in favor? That's gotta be a wrong call, is there gonna be a call, Martin?
Yes, if you would please. Chair McCool.
Yeah, yes.
Vice Chair Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Harper.
Yes.
Commissioner Malia.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right, the passage unanimous, sorry, thank you. All right, so officially gavel in, the public hearing to review and comment on a planned development, final plan and final development plan for Rogers Farm. And that hearing is open, and let's see, is there proof of publication, Martin?
There is, here it is.
Excellent. And staff presentation, and I'm assuming we don't have 3D, no, we don't have, no, okay, so staff presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen Williams Town Staff, I'll share my screen and confirm everybody can see it, and then I'll start my presentation. You guys can see that, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Again, Stephen Williams Town Staff, tonight's presentation, application involves a rezoning and plan development request, a final subdivision plan, and a final development plan for Rogers Farm. The applicant Boulder Creek neighborhoods and members of the design team are in attendance tonight as well, and have a presentation of their own. The subject property, which is commonly referred to as Rogers Farm, is located here in White. The area is bordered by residential uses within original town to the northwest and west. The area to the immediate west is currently being developed by Boulder Creek neighborhoods as well on platted lots as a byright use for single-family homes. The subject property is also bounded by Coal Creek to the north, open space to the south, and McAsland Boulevard to the immediate east. Further east of McAsland, the 157-acre mixed-use downtown Superior Development is also currently under construction. The order of these applications differs slightly from the park proposal that PC recently considered. The rezoning for Rogers Farm will be processed first, that's to allow for the size of the lots proposed. So if we need to get into that nuance, I can detail that later. But as such, we're going to look at the PD first, followed by the subdivision plat and the final development plan, and that's the order that these would be sequenced, should they get approved. As detailed in staff's memo, the development standards table here on the right, this is the cover sheet of the PD, outlines the parameters of the proposed plan development, which we'll delve into here shortly. First, I wanted to orient you real quickly with the site a little bit more. So this is the second sheet of the PD. It includes two maps illustrated here, the map on the left clarifies the specific area to be rezoned. It's this area kind of shaded in pink, mostly right along McAsland, but also involves the area along Coal Creek, north of the existing RM zoning where the byright Rogers Farm referred to as Phase One in the applicant's materials is currently being developed. The graphic on the right more clearly depicts the proposed subdivision layout. The plat and the development proposal would create and construct West Douglas, so this block of West Douglas from McAsland to First Avenue. The area north of West Douglas is considered Block One, and the area to the south is Block Two. Block One is designed to include 12 lots, and Block Two is plotted to contain the additional 49 residences proposed. The blocks are all designed with alley access, that would be privately maintained, and green space along McAsland Boulevard. So the development standards table is separated into six subsections, and the first two of those sections are illustrated and enlarged here, so you can see them easier. They're all set up to relate the existing RM standard relative to what's proposed in the PD. So the total acreage is reflected as just shy of 8.8 acres, with six and a half acres being associated with the development area, and 2.27 acres being dedicated to the town as open space. Based on town code, that entire area gets factored into the density calculation, which amounts to just under eight units per acre for the 61 units proposed. And that is the same maximum that is currently permissible, as you see here, within RM, current RM zoning. The land section of the table also illustrates that BCN is proposing both single-family detached and single-family attached residences. The building portion of the zoning table illustrates what is proposed in terms of minimum lot sizes, building height, massing, lot widths, and lot coverage, again contrasting what's proposed relative to the existing RM zoning allowance. So as illustrated, the proposed minimum lot size is 1,540 square feet, where the current standard is 6,000. BCN is also proposing both two- and three-story cottages, with the height allowance for the three-story product extending to 38 feet. The current height maximum within RM zoning is 32 feet, and the massing limitation is two stories. All of BCN's two-story product would fall under the 32-foot limit, and they're requesting a maximum of 13 units be allowed at the three stories, which we'll get into when we get to the final development portion of this review. BCN is also proposing a 24-foot lot width and a 70% lot coverage allowance, where RM zoning requires a 50-foot minimum lot width and, as established, a 40% maximum lot coverage for those blocks, or for those lots. The next two subsections of the development standard tables address setbacks and open space requirements. As illustrated here, the proposed week cottage product would have a shorter setback than what is currently, would have shorter setbacks in general than what is currently permitted in RM zoning. They're proposing five-foot front yards, three-foot side yards, and a six-foot minimum rear setback. Basically, two-foot reductions for the rear and the side yards versus what is currently allowed, and then a 20-foot reduction relative to the front yard setback. Again, this is all in relation to the existing medium-density residential standards. The total open space area is proposed to remain the same at 40%. The last two sections of this table address street dimensions and parking. The only public street associated with this application, or the complete public street, is Douglas. There's also a slight widening proposed along the eastern edge of First Avenue, and that's what's reflected here. So they're proposing to dedicate an initial foot and a half of right-of-way in order to widen the sidewalk on the eastern edge and provide a more multimodal path on that sidewalk. So instead of the standard five-foot wide, they're proposing an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the east side. This table also illustrates the private drive or the alley width, so the alley widths within original town are 20, 20 feet. They're proposing 24 feet, and then on-street parking stalls are the standard dimension. The parking section of this table clarifies that BCN's week cottages will include both two- and three-bedroom options, and they're proposing to provide two parking spaces per unit regardless of the bedroom count. Parking on development parcels would occur through a mix of one- and two-car garages, where a one-car garage is proposed, an additional surface parking space would be afforded on that lot. BCN has also included 18 off-street parking spaces, which would be accommodated within Blocks One and Two off of their proposed private alleys. And then they're illustrating that an additional 32 parking spaces are available on West Douglas and on the eastern side of First Avenue. So the context site plan is illustrated here. It clarifies how this project will integrate with the surrounding development. As I mentioned earlier, Douglas Street will be extended from McAsland to First Avenue to provide that connection between original town and McAsland. And then, just so everyone realizes, that roundabout extends and then ties into downtown Superior to the east. Rogers Farm is also noted in their application materials that they're proposing. So one of the key aspects of this general design is that Douglas wouldn't go through and tie in directly to original town. It will kind of create a more circuitous route to get into original town by forcing traffic to go south and use Thomas Street. So as part of the application, they were trying to vacate this road, and we've, because of the vacation, is not going to adjacent property owners. And it's just more complicated when you have a dedicated right-of-way. We were advised to do this through a quick claim process, and that process will get considered by the town board at a subsequent meeting in the future. But just so everyone realizes that part of the design is for this right-of-way to be developed as pocket parks for their larger, kind of both sides of their development, and for this connectivity not to extend through to Second Avenue, but to actually route traffic south, as that's a traffic mitigation design measure. In addition to vehicle connectivity, this graphic also illustrates the pedestrian paths that have been proposed through this development. So the area in green is more of the multimodal wider path that is shown. There's a connection that's planned on the south side of Coal Creek that's illustrated here. The development within the white area is what's going to get developed as part of the Rogers Farm development. And then the red extension will occur by the town through our work with Mile High Flood District and the Coal Creek Improvement Center planned for this area. As you move south, that eight-foot-wide trail would extend to provide a good connectivity between the open space to the north and the open space trail connections to the south, which include Mayhopper Single Tree and the Orman Roach Trailhead that just got built along McAsland to the southeast. So you can also see that the pink connections are the ADA accessible paths through the development. I've kind of covered them up a little bit with, to kind of clarify the private alleys in the darker gray. But you do see that there's a strong pedestrian connection along the east side of their development, and then connections through east-west, both internally and to the south and north of Douglas Street there. The PD application includes the required components, such as the comprehensive site design, preliminary and utility grading plans illustrated here. As clarified in staff's memos, there's a lot of overlap when we process a PD amendment and a final development plan at the same time. So not going to get into too many of those details here. Some of the more site-specific details I'll get into with the final development plan application. But if you have any general questions on any of the stuff after the presentation, I'm happy to dig into that further. The PD also established the landscape design and requirements for the proposed development. That design can generally be categorized into two basic elements. It's a natural design, kind of natural landscaping design around Coal Creek, and then immediately around McAsland, and then more of a developed manicured landscape design immediately around the proposed development lots. BCN's product is designed to be low-maintenance, with more focus on common areas than private yards. So there's a pocket park also proposed, just east of First Avenue within Block Two. And some of the site amenities within these common spaces are illustrated here on the right. So we've reviewed this for consistency with their general application, and then also some of the more details that are shared with Phase One, like such as the street lighting, has also been reviewed for consistency. The PD includes two detail sheets, the lot typicals that are reflected here, and a collection of building elevations that help clarify both the proposed product and the architecture and color schemes proposed. So there's a lot of information in both of these slides, but kind of maybe particularly this one. They illustrate the various lot dimensions, floor plans, unit combinations, and also clarify the proposed setbacks and building separations. So as I mentioned early on, there are, some of the products can, are built to be standing alone. Some products are built that they can actually be paired with other products. So the one and seven actually have the same exact footprint, but the seven is bigger because it has floor area finished above that garage in the back, whereas the cottage unit one does not. So these can be paired together, and whenever a unit is paired, it is paired with a shared garage wall. So that's what you see throughout all of these. The cottage two is a little bit wider than the cottage one and seven, it's at 20 feet versus the 16 feet. Cottage five is similar in width as cottages one and two, but it's a longer product. So it's got a larger square footage, and it also has a two-car garage standard, whereas the cottage one and seven shows the one-car garage. And then cottage five is also a different, slightly different product with a different floor area, and then different bedroom counts throughout. The cottage eight is the shortest, is planted on the shortest lot, and it's the three-story product. So even though it's got kind of the smallest lot, because it has three floors of living area, it tallies in as the largest floor area available with a 1,536 square foot total. And that one is always a standard three-bedroom unit.
Mr. Stevens, I apologize if I missed the write-up, but it is a paired unit anticipated to be a single owner?
No, so there's a lot line that'll separate them, they're just attached. So you can have a shared wall, like you're, even on our townhomes and downtown Superior, you can have a shared wall for the whole product and have a building or a lot line that runs through it that separates those two. So it needs different building code standards in order to allow for that, but you can put a wall on a lot line essentially, and ownership would be individual between the two different lots.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I think we got through most of this slide. Lot depths range between 70 and 81 feet for the two-story product. The lot eight is sited on a lot that's 55 feet deep. And then cottages two and one are proposed at a two-bedroom unit, whereas cottages two and five, just like cottage eight, cottage eight's a three-bedroom standard, cottages two and five have a three-bedroom option. And then the color illustration that's included in the PD is reflected here. It helps reflect the architectural theme and materials and colors that are proposed for this development. These renderings also do a good job of illustrating the various roof types, building heights, and spacing between the units that are proposed. Generally, the two-story units range between 23 and 29 feet, fall under the 32-foot height maximum. And then the cottage three, or the three-story cottage product, is reflected in their plans as a 35-foot product. They asked for the 38 feet for changes in grade that affect those elevations. So staff has noted in their presentation, or their memos that were provided to you guys last week, that some stronger language and regulations have been required, and we've been working with that, with the applicant on that. And I feel like it's already in the application as a total. It's more reflected on the FDP sheets in some cases, but it does need to be in the PD as well, because the PD is the zoning. So no real concerns there, it's just we have to have some additional notes and terms that stipulate that we're going to get mostly the variety that we're looking at, and we'll get into that here. That'll be more clear when we get into the FDP portion of this review. So some of the graphics from the plat application are illustrated here. Staff has separated the overall plat into Block One on the left and Block Two on the right, just so we can fit it all on one slide at a decent scale. The 2.27-acre open space dedication is illustrated in green. Block Two also includes two parcels. No, Block One, excuse me, includes two parcels, parcel B reflected here, and then parcel A. So parcel B, this is part of the Rogers Farm Phase One area, but there's an alley that kind of dead-ends, and then there's First Avenue that otherwise dead-ends. So we're working with Public Works, the desire here was to create a space where you can actually have that access connect these two alleys. So this still needs to be reflected differently, because I think Public Works wants this just as dedicated parcel to the town and as right-of-way, but essentially it just provides better connectivity, so you don't have to do a turnaround in this alley or a turnaround on First Avenue, and you can connect through. So that's been something that we've been revising. But otherwise, parcel A is similar to parcel C, which you're going to see over here, which is basically the surrounding development, including the alleys around the individual lots are all going to be owned and maintained by BCN's HOA after the development is established. So all the landscaping maintenance is going to be consistent, just like most of their other projects in Superior. So Block Two, I guess one other thing here is that, you know, Block One shows that four units are kind of sited along the northern portion of, you know, just south of Track A. Four units are located along Douglas Street, and four units are located kind of parallel with McAsland. And so these units, as you'll see in the FDP, will face east, these units will face north, and then the ones along Douglas will front the right-of-way. And then the 49 units along Block Two are illustrated here. Parcel C contains these alleyways, which you can kind of see in general, they're more obvious on other plat sheets. And then there's easements that go over these that kind of differentiate, that you have emergency access, public access in certain areas, drainage easements and that type of stuff. But that's all been reviewed to be consistent with the development application plan as well, and those are actually shown in more detail here. So you can see that these alleys are more defined on the more detailed plan sheets. So getting into the third aspect of this proposal, the final development plan, details how the 61 week cottages are proposed to be sited, provides additional clarification on their architectural details and color schemes as well, and that variety that I mentioned earlier. The enlarged site data table clarifies how this proposal conforms with the PD. So this is, like I mentioned in my staff memo, it's a kind of a unique review to, you know, we're basically establishing the PD now. So the FDP, it's really just a kind of a consistency review to make sure that the two things match, but this PD is geared towards allowing for this particular development, and they've been contemplated and developed at the same time. But that does include additional detail, so the FDP certainly gets into some more development specifics, which I'll generally cover here. The West Douglas Street right-of-way is shown here, it's a fairly standard 60-foot right-of-way with two travel lanes, an additional parking on both sides of the street, tree lawns, and then sidewalks. So the one nuance, which I may not have mentioned, was that there's an additional wider sidewalk on the south side of Douglas that will connect the trail on the east side of First Avenue to McAsland. So it'll provide that multimodal connectivity for those that may not want to use the street to, you know, ride a bicycle or something. And then First Avenue, really this illustration just kind of clarifies that it was a 60-foot right-of-way, and they're proposing this additional one and a half feet in order to gain, you know, make this sidewalk bigger. So there is a little bit of reduction in this landscape, and then mostly it's being dedicated through the private property development within Phase Two of Rogers in order to get that eight-foot-wide sidewalk and a strong multimodal connection. And then over here, we just see the two sections for their private alleys, and they're all platted at 24 feet wide and will be developed at 24 feet wide. There is, when we have the three-story structure, fire, emergency access requires a little bit wider emergency access. So that's all that this is clarifying, is that where we're going to have a three-story building immediately adjacent to that, it needs to have a 26-foot-wide emergency access easement, which we've accommodated through the plat. The FDP plan sheets also include partial plan sets, which give you a greater scale and clarify things a little bit easier. For instance, BCN is proposing to construct an east-west trail connecting the alley between First Avenue to the existing alley, which I mentioned already. So that's not a trail, more of an alley, excuse me. But, so that's what's being built here, and they're showing some additional parking on the north side in order to help with overflow parking within both developments. Additional clarification on the home layout is also illustrated. There's some stars here that kind of clarify, there's a KOMAR currently being processed, so that's what these stars indicate, that these units can't be built until that KOMAR is completed, and the FDP reflects that. And then this also clarifies the layouts. So we talked about some of those units being connected as an attached product, and those are reflected here, 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 and here even, and then these are all single-family detached units. So this is looking at that in a little bit more detail in relation to the lot typical layout. So you can see that, you know, for lots nine and 10, this is the layout, the detached, the detached product that's proposed for lots two and, one and two, excuse me, and seven and eight. We have this product with the shorter kind of lot, and then we have the longer lots proposed for lots five and six down here. And then you have, this unit's the more, kind of, you got a wide product, and then a skinny product with one, two-car garage on one of these. I think it's this one, but maybe I circled the wrong one. I think this is actually reflecting just the option to have the two-car garage on the back of this one as well. So there is some variety and some options to kind of make these unique and decide the different floor areas. But that's what you get, the kind of detail you get with these enlarged site plans. So the northern and then the southern sections of Block Two are illustrated here and enlarged again. So sorry for the split, but it's easier to see it at this scale. Within Block Two, 10 lots with varying widths are sited along Douglas and face north. An additional nine lots are located along the east side of this proposal. It will face east towards McAsland. An additional 12 lots are sited along the south, and then the internal pocket park has 18 lots around it, that border, that border of this pocket park. And they've done a good job with their, kind of stepping these things back and articulating these units so that, you know, even a unit as far back as this has some visibility of that pocket park, and they've created as much separation between these units, especially versus prior submittals that we saw, to create this articulation. And then the yellow highlighted area reflects the areas. So all of the 13 three-story products are proposed within Block Two, and they're always sited internally to a row of homes. So you're going to have two-story products on either side, and then you step up to this three-story product, and you step back down. So that kind of limits the massing. So if a three-story product was here, it would have more of an impact on the pedestrian experience and the right-of-way experience than a two-story that kind of graduates up to the three-story product. And I think they have some better illustrations in their presentation to clarify how these block faces will look. But it's also a benefit to have these on shorter lots, you get a greater kind of separation there, their setback further, so that height is also minimized by the additional distance based on the shorter lots. Locations of sidewalks, ramps, stairs, parking areas are also more identified or more clearly identified. So the 18 parking spaces So the 18 parking spaces are distributed, most of which are, there's three on the previous slide I'll show you here within block one. And then the additional 15 are located within block two. And they're separated out to the northern portion of it, reflected here and to the southern portion of it. It's wrapped around both alleys in the southeast corner of the site. So we've seen this illustration already. I don't know why it floated on me. But I'd have to escape to get out of it. Let's see if I can pull it back down real quick. All right, sorry about that. So as we discussed, VCN is proposing five cottage four plans. So they have a cottage one and a cottage seven with the same building footprint. They do vary in floor area. So I think we've, we've kind of covered most of this already. So just kind of, I just wanted to, as I was preparing this, I wanted to make sure that we were familiar with it before we jump into the elevations. But I think you're going to, you're going to be able to see. One of the things that is unique, you know, even when you have a cottage one product that's going to look like the same footprint as the cottage seven, the fact that this garage is actually offset from from the primary kind of living space in the front changes the front elevation of this unit. So we'll get into that too. But there's a lot of little nuances, even though that there's, you know, like for the, for the, you know, minimal amount of product and the, there's a lot of detail included in their proposal that, that ensures, you know, a sufficient variety for these 61 different units. So cottage one has six different elevation options, which are illustrated here. They're proposing, you know, changes in roof pitch and roof, roof type. So you get some, some slope roofs, some gable roofs, some differences in, you know, the porch elements in terms of, you know, how those, those forms look. You know, that you've got a different accent over this garage door than you have over these other two elevations. There's some variation in window locations and then there's variation also in siding. So for the elevations E and H, you have some vertical siding elements, whereas you have two different varieties of lap siding. And so two different widths on the other, the other elevation types. Variation in colors will also be introduced and we'll kind of cover that here once we get to their color, color elevation slides. So cottage, that was cottage one, it had six different elevation types. Cottage two has three, cottage five has six again. So you'll, you'll just see like a variety of options. And then you can also see how the width changes the looks of these units as well from both the back and the, and the front. Cottage seven has three different elevation types and so does cottage eight. Cottage eight has the, the front porch as well as a secondary deck above that front porch on their elevations as well. And then this is what I was getting at with that earlier slide. So even though, sorry, it's jumping on me. So even though cottage one and cottage seven have the same footprint, this is what cottage seven elevation A looks like versus the cottage one elevation A. You can see that massing change from the front elevation as that two story garage occurs on the back of cottage seven versus cottage one. That's just the one story. So you can see that even, you know, on each of these elevations, there is, it just, it changes the massing, it changes the look and it creates the variety that we're looking for in these type of developments. So the other element is some enhanced side elevations. And that was one of the other technical corrections that staff related is just that we need to clarify where all those are going to go. That information's been related to VCN and that'll be included on their application. Most of the changes really involve window placement and the addition of additional windows. And so it makes sense that three foot, five, three foot side setbacks. There's not a lot of side windows proposed when you have internal lots next to each other. But when you do have a lot that's overlooking, you know, either the public right of way or park area or open space area, there are more windows included generally on both first floor and second floor, but always on that second floor elevation. And then the colors that are proposed, there's, that's the other element that really provides a variety. There's eight different color schemes for body one, which is reflected down here where those locations are. It's the primary color. There's eight unique color schemes for body one, for body two. You see these pairs are the same, but there's, the combinations are always unique. And then you also get a different color for your trim accents, shingles and your gutter spouts. And then this illustration is also included in order to help clarify how those color schemes work together and also work when you have a paired product. So similar color schemes, but complementary variations in that vertical siding versus the horizontal siding. Generally the wider eight and a quarter inch width is located on the the lower half, and then it gets to a five inch width horizontal lap siding on the upper levels to create that variety. And then bands generally located to, to separate those two siding materials. So that's staff's presentation. As I related, there are three different aspects of this proposal and they've been separated and organized. So they can be recorded in a particular sequence. So the recommendation for the first action would be for, to take is on the, on the PD per the conditions outlined here. And then to take action on the plat for these conditions and most of the conditions revolve, involve either technical corrections or just the sequencing. And then lastly, for the action to be taken on that final development plan. The other thing I wanted to clarify is that we do have our environmental consultant on hand. There was an environmental report that was done as, as part of this application. It didn't really yield much there. I mean, it basically concluded that the, the possibility for any kind of concern was related to Prebble's metal jumping mouse and it was associated with a creek and there's no impacts to the creek. So there really weren't, I mean, that's a rough summary. But she's here now and the only reason I bring it up is because she was here last night too, until 11. So if we have questions for her, I appreciate that those be directed kind of early on in the, in the process. We can do that now or we can turn it over to the applicant. It's up to you guys.
All right, thank you, Stephen. What are your thoughts on that commissioners and/or do you have any questions for Stephen? Why don't I just go through everybody? Lisa, yeah, why don't I start with you, you're first on the screen?
Um, and this can be for either applicants or staff, but can you describe maybe the design of the detention facilities? And are we using maybe some more naturalized elements? You know, rather than maybe the more traditional concrete trickle channels and things like that? Is it particularly as it's next to the creek? And I noticed too, you know, a lot of the area between the back of the homes or the front of the homes at front McCaslin and then McCaslin itself, you know, that's a detention area. So maybe the landscape design and concept, how that, how that translates. So kind of set that stage and then the grade difference too, between McCaslin and both the top of the homes and, you know, kind of the street grade level from that transition. So I know there's a lot of grade in there.
Stephen, I can. You want me to take the?
Sure.
In terms of the water quality aspects, the swell along McCaslin is a grass lined swell. So that'll provide some, some more quality benefits is that water comes, comes down through. Because we're so near to the creek, we don't need to do detentions. So we're really doing water quality. Designed it so there's a water quality bay right down before the water hits the creek. So some water quality features, but there is not detention. So we have, we have a swell along McCaslin and then the water quality feature before you hit the creek. So I think that was the storm drainage issue. Did I get that right, Steve? Stephen, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the grade offhand. So Jim Brostovich is on the line too. He might be able to clarify the exact rate. And then we can look at the landscape plan in that area in more detail if Commissioner Ritchie wants to.
Yeah, if I could ask also, as you're speaking to just identify who you are, introduce yourself probably the first time, just so for the recording we have it. That was Alex Aronello.
Sure, I'm sorry. This is Alex Aronello, Public Works Director.
If we could just do that as we move, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Jim Brostovich, civil resources engineer for this project. A couple of quick things, Alex, you, you got the drainage tray. One thing to add there is that that pond is largely already built. The, the outlet works is already installed, was put in for the single family homes that are already built sized in the, you know, in anticipation of this project. We will have to expand it a little bit, but we're not changing the outlet works. By grading wise, the intersection of Douglas and First Avenue is actually only 1% sloped down from the roundabout. So it's, it seems like it would be lower, but it's only 1% lower. The, the houses, the south end of the block two, which is the south end of the project is going to be lower than McCaslin. And I don't have the plans in front of me, but it's not radically lower. And as, as you go along Douglas and then the things north of Douglas is more or less level with McCaslin.
Right, okay. And then from a landscape perspective, I guess it's probably not quite as steep as what I was looking at, but maybe what's that landscape aesthetic between McCaslin and, and those homes there in the right of way? And just kind of want to, I mean, I know it's all in the packet, but just hear the description as well.
Mike, do you have somebody from your landscape team that wants to field that or?
Yeah, Paul Shukis from PCS Group is on the line. I think he can field that one.
Hi, I'm Paul Shukis with PCS Group. So there is a combination of a lot of native grass that leads up to the McCaslin. Then we have a meandering five foot walk that buffers the front of the wee cottage homes. And then we have lots of pockets of deciduous and evergreen trees that go along that meandering walk with small pockets of turf and a lot of also deciduous and evergreen shrubs. And they're probably, the shrub, the proposed shrub layout is maybe between two and five shrubs deep. So it's a very organic layout and it really tries to complement the meandering walk.
Lisa, I can pull up the landscape plan if you want to see it and.
No, I was looking at it earlier. I just kind of wanted to just get the description from the applicant or from staff, you know, just to kind of confirm what I was, what I saw. That was helpful. Thank you.
And David, I've got you up if you have any comments or questions for staff. And Jerry, I'll have you go after David.
I have a question and a comment. The native grass on the McCaslin side is described as being non-irrigated. The only, from my, from my experience, our own developments, I would have to say that non-irrigated native grass is best described as weeds. I don't know if there's any plan to address that. That's my comment. The question is, on these alleys, particularly in block two, these quite long. What is actually the snow removal plan for those alleys? Since cars have to get in and out of them to actually get to the street.
And if any of this is going to be covered in the applicant's presentation, just let us know that. Otherwise Stephen, if you want to take that, if you know.
So the alleys are private, they'll be privately maintained. We do have public access over them, but the, the, when you, when we, it's similar to how we've treated anything within the town center. When we substitute a public road for an alley to, to do this type of, you know, front, front or rear loaded product with, you know, kind of heavy, you know, front porch and design aesthetic to the front. And that, it's not meeting town standards. So the town does not maintain those roads. That's a, that's something that's going to be maintained by the developer. In terms of your irrigation comments, if, I think that's, I mean, I, I don't do a lot of the landscape review. We have a consultant for that. But the town standard is for anything irrigated, everything to be irrigated. And we do require permanent irrigation even to establish, you know, something that might get established through temper. We just don't believe in temporary irrigation generally because it, it's cost about comparable to establish permanent irrigation. And, and we prefer to have that, that latitude to run that as long as we need to, to get the grasses and then the native landscaping established. So that'll be a change if it, if it needs to be. But I, I'd be surprised if the landscape plans are, are not reflecting that accurately. So, but I'll, I'll double check.
The reason I asked was I thought I saw in, maybe it was Boulder Creek's write-up that it was non-irrigated somewhere. I believe I saw.
No, I, I believe you. So it'll just need to be corrected or clarified.
Jerry, do you have anything? Then Ben, you'll go after Jerry.
I've just got a quick comment and a, and a, and a plug. Stephen, another stellar presentation. Thank you very much. I've read through all the materials that we got late Friday. I don't appreciate getting them late Friday and having a meeting on Tuesday. I have to tell you that. That's my comment. My question, Stephen, you raised a point about those two pocket parks and that the best way of transferring them would be through a quit claim deed. Who's quit claiming, quit claiming to who?
It would be the town quit claiming to them. So the, the pocket parks we've discussed with the applicant, they'll be publicly accessible parks that will require a public access easement over them because they're public, public now. But VCN is proposing to develop them and maintain them as part of their, they're both of their subdivision developments, phases of Rogers Farm one and two. So it's for their community, but it's going to be a publicly accessible park for the entire neighborhood. Okay. Or the entire town.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Sure. Good question.
Thanks, Jerry. Ben, you're up and then Jason after Ben.
No questions or comments yet.
Thanks, Ben. Jason, do you have anything?
No, my questions are just answering.
My only question is the entrances to the garages, they're all alley, right?
Correct.
There's no place or even attempted place to be able to park outside of a garage, right? You would have to pull your car in.
So yeah, the alley design, you can't park behind the garage if that's your question. There's no driveway other than the ones that are single, single car garages will have a parking stall next to them. But the, that alley depth is six feet and that's intentional. You don't want to have anything too long that would encourage somebody to park there. You kind of need it shorter to preclude parking. And there's, there's a sign, sign plan as part of the FDP. And 90% of the signs that get installed in a development like this are no parking signs. So that's, that's to secure the fire access.
And how is that enforced if alleyways are not town controlled or maintained?
We can ask the developer how they typically enforce on that. But if it becomes a problem, I don't know that there's a, an issue with, you know, the town taking action. And certainly the fire district could, could clarify or issue a notice if they're, they're not respecting the fire access line.
And I mean, you're saying developer, but when this is all said and done, this is an HOA.
The HOA or whatever form. So yeah, Mike would need to clarify how he intends to, to handle that or how he handles that in his other subdivisions.
Okay. And I'll just ask if the applicant would just cover that while he's during their presentation. You don't have to answer it at this moment. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I guess as I'm, as I'm thinking through here, I have a lot more questions, but it'll come up later. But if the applicant could maybe describe their efforts for reaching out to the neighborhood to garner whatever level of support or understanding on this development, I think that would be helpful as well for me.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like, like to hear that too. All right. All right, if there isn't any other further questions for staff.
And then do we think that we're going to have any questions on environmental concerns? Or can we let our consultant go?
Can you describe a little bit the low water crossing and any impacts related to that? Just.
Alex, you want to handle that? Rebecca, I guess can handle it.
Not from an environmental standpoint, but you know, originally we had looked at a bridge connecting this development with the original Superior. That turned out to be a pretty large structure. So we felt. So we felt that a low water crossing was was less impactful. You know, aesthetically, but the low water crossing is going to be similar to what we will have on the creek to the east of McCaslin will have, I think, three or four low water crossings going across the creek. So they're meant to be you know, overtopped during the, you know, major floods. So be probably some damage that you'd have to put back, but yeah, during the, it'll probably, you know, for the smaller storms, it probably designed for 25 year storms, something like that. But it'll be less impactful, much lower than than you would have with a bridge structure. So we think they'll be less impactful and more fitting in this area. But from an environmental standpoint, maybe your.
Yeah, Rebecca's here. She can, she can respond. So Rebecca Han from Smith Environmental is on the line as well.
Yeah. Hi. Like you said, Rebecca with Smith Environmental. I didn't look too closely at the water crossings. We were mostly talking about wildlife habitat potential on the site and potential disturbance at Coal Creek. And really the ultimate conclusion was the site itself is not great wildlife habitat, just a history of land use and disturbance on that site. A lot of, you know, there's traffic on the roadway. There's already development in the area. And then we specifically looked at the Prebles Meadow Jumping Mouse along Coal Creek. There's only been a couple of occurrences of trapping. One was in the late 90s and they did find a mouse about a mile upstream. Colorado or not Colorado, Boulder County Parks and Open Space actually trapped that, I think, a year or two after the floods. I think they went in there in 2014 or 15. And they did not find the mouse there at that time. So we're not really concerned with any specific impacts related to the development or any crossings in that area.
And I guess I should clarify too, that the the low water crossing is not part of this application. It's something that has to get coordinated separately through the Public Works Department's application for the creek restoration, which goes through Mile High Flood District. So there'll be a contribution to that crossing that gets made by BCN through this application, but it's not actually being built or designed. And that's why Rebecca didn't see it. So sorry, I didn't clarify that.
Fair enough. Okay.
All right. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Yes, we do.
You make sure you introduce yourself and others who just introduce yourself before you speak.
Yes, Mike Cooper with Boulder Creek Neighborhoods here. Confirm you can see my screen. I'd appreciate that.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for taking the time for the meeting tonight. Appreciate it and appreciate the virtualness of the meeting as well. My address is 712 Main Street, Louisville, Colorado, 80027. And thank you for considering our proposal for this second phase of Rogers Farm. We have our consulting team available in attendance tonight. If there's anything on a technical nature, Jim Brostovich from Civil Resources and Chris McRanahan from LST Consultants on Traffic Engineering and Paul Shukis, who you've already heard from, related to planning and landscape architecture. I'm, I'll save the long introduction about Boulder Creek Neighborhoods. I'm sure you're all familiar with us, with our neighborhoods at Calmonte and more recently Lanterns at Rock Creek. And obviously the first phase of this Rogers Farm, the single family homes that are under construction now. One thing I would touch upon is we did have a neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago on June 2. It was a virtual meeting, obviously, and we mailed out about 300 notices within 1,000 feet, same noticing as for this hearing. And we had five attendees at that meeting. There might have been one or two who didn't sign in. And there was just some various questions about the timing of the development, the trail crossing, the film material on the site and some questions about the front yard areas. And that was really the the extent of the questions. So there really wasn't any, any controversy or major issues raised at that meeting. I certainly reached out to everybody and said, you know, I'm available for to talk on the phone or if they need any additional information. Since then, I've corresponded with one of our neighbors in Rogers Farm to clarify some parking and circulation. And then we've had some emails trickle in here since Friday from various neighbors in original town. When we started our first phase development, we did have a neighborhood meeting when we started that project. And we did notify neighbors that there would be a second phase coming that would be town homes. After initially planning town homes for this property, we decided last year to kind of change direction to our We Cottage product, which is a smaller, more attainably priced home to provide a unique home offering, particularly from the town homes and larger single family homes in downtown Superior. At that meeting, we also heard feedback from some neighbors on the phase one homes at the We Cottage is a home type that's more in scale with original town. And at the time, we could not build that in phase one, but we took that to note and and more recently changed direction to to build the We Cottage here. So with that, I'll, I'll start the presentation here and let me see if I can get this full screen. Let's see here. I'm sure you're all aware of the the location of this site. I won't go into this too deep. The property is in the farthest southeast corner of original town. The parcels highlighted in white here. The access is directly off the roundabout on McCaslin Boulevard, which along with the downtown Superior Development lies to the east. Open spaces to the south, Coal Creek is to the north and our phase one, single family homes are to the west. We Cottage is a market rate attainable, single family detached home. The homes are alley loaded with what we call right sized floor plans, large front porches and small front yards. There are five plans ranging from 900 square feet to 1,500 square feet and six elevation styles and eight color schemes, which amongst this provides a great variety of homes, styles and colors. We really like these We cottages in this neighborhood for a few main reasons. The scale and the character of these homes are complementary to homes in original town. They're offered at a fairly attainable price point for Boulder County in the low 400s. And they offer product diversity in a local market that's saturated with large expensive town homes and single family detached homes. These homes that you see here were first built in Centerra on lots that were designed for town homes. Thus, we initially coined these detached town homes. This is not a new concept. The average home size in the 1950s was under 1,000 square feet with an average of 3.3 people per household. Since then, home sizes have continually grown while household size has generally decreased. People though still desire single family homes, but many of them either can't, can't qualify or they spend way too much of their income on housing. So they're often forced to rent or buy existing housing stock. This cottage home on a small lot is now making a resurgence, appealing to singles, couples and small families who are getting priced out of new homes and even existing homes. They also appeal to empty nesters, downsizers and downshifters, which is our key demographic, seeking to simplify their lives and right size their mortgages and expenses. With the density that rivals town homes, We Cottage offers buyers a more desirable product in a detached home, offering more of a sense of ownership than town homes, condos and apartments. The scale of the We cottages is also more compatible in the neighborhood than town homes, which are allowed as used by right under the current zoning. In Longmont at a neighborhood called Blue Vista, we're finishing build out of a neighborhood where the We Cottage was initially conceived in the early 2000s. This neighborhood has 102 homes and they form a tight neighborhood plan where the homes front the streets, have small backyards and detached garages and some homes are clustered around small pocket parks and courtyards. Following the build out at Centerra and starting Blue Vista, we have built We cottages at Stapleton with an unrivaled success. With only 36 homes offered, we sold them in two months with an interest list of over 700 people. These homes all front the street in a neo traditional neighborhood, but we will be building We cottages in the last phase of Stapleton in the clustered green court configuration, similar to what you'll see in some subsequent slides here. In a more suburban context, we're currently building 71 We cottages in Riverdale in Thornton as part of a larger active adult community. This neighborhood features homes fronting the entry streets of that neighborhood, along with half the homes flanking a large central park. This was kind of the next evolution of our We Cottage product. And finally, we're in the planning phase of a larger We Cottage neighborhood of 150 homes at Erie Commons, where we're designing a totally new concept, where nearly all the homes are fronting to pocket parks, common greens and landscape courtyards. This is the true neighborhood form of the cottage cluster. This is a true pedestrian oriented development and we're using this concept, applying some of those principles here at Rogers Farm. The home designs for these cottages match what we are planning for Rogers, featuring large usable front porches, about six to nine feet in depth, small front yards fenced with a low picket fence and attached one to two car garages in the rear alley. The neighborhood also includes a three story cottage plan that is strategically located in the neighborhood, as Stephen had mentioned. In this case, providing a strong architectural presence at the terminus of these courtyards, offering more architectural variety and interesting outdoor gathering spaces due to its compact footprint. This neighborhood form lends itself to more community interaction through a melding of public and private spaces, which culminates in a neighborhood emphasizing walkability and sociability with one's neighbor. So now I'll get into the site, site plan aspects of this a little bit. And I'll try not to harp on the stuff that Stephen covered in his presentation. But please note that I've turned the plan on this so that north is going to the left. So just to orient you quickly here, McCaslin Boulevard is on the top, which is the east. Coal Creek is on the left hand side, the north. Then may offer open spaces on the right, the south. And Second Avenue is on the bottom of the screen, the west. And our single family phase one homes are highlighted in the white area. All the subsequent slides will be of this nature for the most part. First Avenue runs left to right across the screen here and Thomas Street here, which are already constructed for our phase one homes. We built a pocket park, as Stephen mentioned, in the Douglas Street right of way as part of phase one at the terminus of what will be Douglas Street with phase two. We did this due to the feedback from previous neighborhood meetings years back that the direction was that it was not desired that there would be a through connection through this neighborhood from McCaslin to Second Avenue. We felt that a park was better suited here in lieu of a vacant right of way. This provides a nice entry into the neighborhood. And as part of our proposal, we proposed to vacate this right of way on this portion of Douglas Street. And this is proposed to the Board of Trustees to consider. Because of the close proximity to McCaslin and the well functioning roundabout, we anticipate about 90 to 95% of our traffic will utilize direct access to McCaslin Boulevard and the roundabout as opposed to driving through original town. This is key in minimizing impact to the existing neighborhood. So we are proposing 61 homes, We cottages here, and we paid careful attention to several key organizing elements here. The street frontages, the consideration of the public views into the neighborhood by fronting the majority of the homes to McCaslin and Douglas Street. Homes fronting to open space on the north and the south and homes framing the proposed pocket park in the center of the neighborhood. And as well as minimizing views of alleys and garages along, along this area here. And that'll give you an indication of kind of the type of the landscaping and the meandering path that was, that Paul had described earlier. This view shows the entry into the neighborhood off the roundabout on McCaslin. On the right are the several homes fronting McCaslin, though situated well back from the street. We thought this was important to front the majority of the homes to McCaslin to consider the public views in the neighborhood. On the left, you can see the homes fronting Douglas Street as you enter in with front doors and porches brought up closer to the street. In the center of this block here, you can see the three story homes mid block strategically located in this instance to break up the continuous row of homes and provide an opportunity for a greater setback in a little seating area with really nice western mountain views here to the west. In terms of the town dedicated open space, we're providing 2.2 acres to dedicate as shown here in the green on the left. This land is in and around Coal Creek. We will construct a trail in this area, leading up and stopping right about here where the detention pond is. This pond has been sized to accommodate the second phase and Boulder Creek will contribute funds toward this future low water crossing and this trail connection through here via the subdivision improvement agreement that goes along with the plat. This will ultimately connect Second Avenue to Grasso Park and then this will lead underneath McCaslin and continue on to downtown Superior and further. In terms of private open space, the additional green area shown here is an additional 2.6 acres for the neighborhood, park spaces and buffer areas. In total, combined with the town dedicated area, this represents over 55% open space. In the developable area of the site, excluding the town dedication areas and the detention pond, we're providing 40% open space, which meets the intent of the current zone designation. We're providing a central park space, about a half acre in size with a big star there to complement the park we built in the phase one, single family area, the other two stars. In addition, we're providing several smaller intimate park spaces totaling about one third acre where residents and neighbors can sit and relax or have small gatherings. These are the areas where we're proposing the three story cottage as previously mentioned. All areas will be open to the public via pedestrian access easement on the plat. Zooming in a bit here, more on the southern part of the neighborhood, this view clarifies the limited areas where we propose the three story cottages here in blue. There'll be a total of 13 of these homes. This really breaks up the continuous blocks of two story homes and adds additional architectural variety, square footage and price point in the neighborhood. These homes have a more compact footprint, so it also provides small enclaves for more intimate outdoor seating areas in these five areas. So throughout the neighborhood, there will be these small enclave seating areas with nice views and very well buffered from McCaslin. And they take advantage of really nice mountain views and open space views. And they're set back a little off the main park area for a more secluded intimate setting. And while this park space is a little larger than a typical cottage courtyard, these subspaces help to break the park down into different semi public zones, whereas a bit more reclusive than the more public open, open turf area. And this view shows the, the central pocket park and the character of the homes flanking it. On the left side, there's a pedestrian connection to the homes that front McCaslin. So that people parking out here on Second Avenue on First Avenue have a space to get a nice pedestrian experience to get out to those front doors there. And you'll note here the cottage eight, the three story with the main level porch and the upper level balconies, which will be really nice homes to take advantage of the western views and looking over the park. As you can see, it really provides a nice transition and some more visual interest here as well as adding some product diversity. Looking, zooming out a little bit and looking at the trails. I'm flipping the, the plan on you again here. North is now up. We will provide significant trail connectivity with this neighborhood, which along with the future Coal Creek Stream Stabilization Project will facilitate seamless trail connections from original town to downtown Superior and the US 36 Trail System. These key trails are shown in red here. And here is highlighted Grasso Park and the new trailhead constructed over here in these orange areas. So the big one is the, the east west trail that runs from First Avenue. I'm sorry, from Second Avenue all the way through our project to the south and connects over to the old railroad bed, which gets on to the, the regional trail system there. The other big trail connection is here, or we're just going to stub it out here and contribute the funds to complete this green dash line, which. Which will go over to Grasso Park and connect to the trail over there and beyond underneath McCaslin. So these are the key regional trail connections that we're completing with this second phase. Not highlighted here, but seen in, in white are all the smaller five foot paths, as you can see going around the neighborhood. Providing the more local trail connections, connecting all the different park spaces and the fronts of homes. And guest parking, et cetera. So. Really, really pedestrian oriented development. We worked with Stephen to, to make all these happen, to reorganize the neighborhood a little bit so that we can get all of these as really quality. Pedestrian experiences, not just trail corridors and such. So we're appreciative of some nudges from Stephen to make this happen. And we think we had culminated in a great success here. Like to touch on parking a little bit here. All residents will have two off-street parking spaces. A one-car garage and adjacent parking bay or a two-car garage. We anticipate that about 40 homes will have the two-car garage and about 21 will have the one-car garage and parking bay. Guests and visitors will park in several off-street parking areas on the alleys and on-street parking as shown in here. Shown here in red. There's 15 spaces in the alley to the south here. There are three spaces in the alley to the north here. There's 15 spaces along Douglas Street. And there's 20 spaces on the east side of First Avenue. That totals 50 spaces, guest spaces, which is about 0.8 spaces per home. Additionally, there's also parking obviously that's shared with the single family homes on the other side of First Avenue. Shown here. And if you include those, that's another 28 spaces on the west side of First Avenue. And six spaces in private driveways where we have enough to park some cars in the backs of these homes. So that totals an additional 34 overflow, I'll call them guest parking spaces if available. Plus there's parking on Thomas Street, which we're not mentioning here as well. So in total, if you consider all of what's shown here. And if you factor in 13 homes that will be built along the other side of First Avenue. It results in about 1.1 guest space per house. Which is about four times what is required, the 0.25 spaces per house in, in the code. I want to qualify that we are not utilizing these numbers, this one's shown in blue. As part of our proposal, I'm just pointing out that the greater totality of the neighborhood and the parking situation. I think it's going to be adequately parked. And I don't see any issues with that, so I just wanted to point that out. Regarding the homes and lot standards, we are proposing a PD which establishes lot standards specific to our product. Because we're, we are a low maintenance builder with most of Boulder Creek's homes. Particularly our active adult product. The lot lines and the lot standards become somewhat irrelevant as we don't typically have fenced off yards. In this case, though, this is not active adult product. We are proposing small front yards with a picket fence. This is an area that the homeowner will install and maintain. It's not intended to be a large grass area or anything like that, it's more of an area to let your dog out. Maybe you could build a small sunny patio space to complement a shady covered front porch. Or you could plant shrubs and flowers. As we provide you things you could do in these small spaces. The sizes will vary from five feet to 15 feet deep. Depending on the specific lot size, the home plan selected. And if an expanded front porch option is selected. Please note that all these standards are a minimum. For example, we show a minimum side setback of three feet, but that really only applies to the rear portion of the house. Which is shown here in green. And that area is just a garage, or if it has living space above the garage, there, there are no windows on that plane over here. That's the green area that I call, I consider it the secondary portion of the house structure. This slide will clarify some of the differences between minimum standards and what we are actually providing. The front setback is a minimum of five feet, but actually it'll be more of an average of eight feet. And is home plan and lot dependent as I mentioned. The side setback is a minimum of three feet, but that actually applies to his back part, like I mentioned. On the rears of the homes. Typically, when we build we cottage, we have a four-foot side setback and eight-foot separation between homes. All those images that I previously showed reflect that for the most part. And that distances between what I call the primary house structure, which is the front of the house. The living space of the house, which has windows on all sides and lets light in, which makes this, makes this live like a detached home, obviously. But the separation between the homes really depends on the site plan and what home is adjacent to it. On an average, looking at the site plan, I went through and measured between each, each of these fronts of the houses. And it averages out to about nine and a half feet building separation on the primary house structure. It varies anywhere between seven feet and 14 feet. But most typically it is around eight feet building separation, which is reflective of what we've built in, in most of our other we cottage communities. And I make this distinction between primary and secondary house structure because. We provide more space between homes where it matters and the front of the house where the living space is. And like I said, that lets all the light in. And that's the area where you want to have the greater building separation, not on the back where it doesn't matter, where you just need to have the minimum. Separation to maintain drainage between the homes. So these next few slides just show their snippets from the site plan that show the distinction between the setback areas. The homes on the right have 10 and a half foot between homes. Which is a kind of standard setback on detached houses. And the homes on the left have an eight-foot setback between homes or distance between homes. And similarly here. The homes on the left have eight foot between homes and the homes on the right have 10 and a half to 14 feet between the homes. So I'd like to touch upon the technicalities of the zoning and how we conform to the comprehensive plan with our proposal. The we cottages don't fit into any existing zoning categories, so we need to create a plan development or PD zoning standards. There's also disconnect between the zoning and comp plan thus further necessitating a PD zoning here. The site is currently zoned RM, medium density residential, which allows eight homes per acre. 32-foot height and two stories. The comp plan recommends six to 12 DU per acre for medium density residential. Overall, our proposal covers 8.8 acres. Applied that density to the 61 homes we're proposing on that 8.8 acres and that comes out to seven homes per acre. Looking at a larger context of original town and combining the entire Rogers property with the single family homes and the we cottages. Rogers Farms, Rogers Farm is five DU per acre as opposed to approximately three DU per acre of existing original town. In terms of building height, 32 feet max is allowed under the current zoning RM. Our typical two-story homes are about 25 feet tall. And the 13 three-story homes that we propose are about 35 feet tall. So generally, we're well under the allowed height and on those 13 proposed three-story homes were about three feet taller than the allowed height under the current RM zoning. The comp plan has four main approval criteria for rezoning to a PD. The application is complete, the project is in the best interest of the town. The project does not place an extraordinary financial burden on the town. And it, and it conforms to all town ordinances and the comp plan and all other policies. Number one is true that the application is complete. And I hope through this presentation that number two, you find true that this is a unique product. Unique neighborhood design and more attainable home price. I hope that this is a compelling argument for that this is in the best interest of the town. We have found that most cities and towns we propose we cottage find this to be true. Number three, staff has found this to be true in their presentation. And I would like to focus on number four now. We have submitted a thorough analysis of how this project conforms to numerous policies in the comp plan. I won't rehash all those nine pages to you now, but I do want to focus on the opportunity area two. The Rogers property from the comp plan. Figure five of that plan lists several guiding principles listed here. The most key points being. Establishing a distinct scale and character different than the town center. Concentrate more intense uses east of First Avenue and orient development towards McCaslin. This section goes on to show. A section with the following site design considerations for the Rogers property. Rogers property officer multifamily at edge with residential architectural character. Transition from three-story to two-story towards interior residential. In a public edge parkway landscape that helps unify the town and the Rogers property. And we have achieved all of these guiding principles with our proposal. And looking at the overall density and corresponding housing types of this neighborhood in the context of the surroundings. I would like to key in on the comp plan policy of varied housing options. Rogers Farm is a density transition from original town, which I mentioned is three DU per acre. Which transitions to Boulder Creek's single family detached, detached block shown there in the center. Which is four DU per acre. And then the we cottage neighborhood at eight DU per acre. And then it transitions to 20 plus DU per acre at downtown Superior. Rogers Farm we cottage provides this missing middle housing type to fill the void between original town and downtown. So to conclude, community benefits include it's a low maintenance community appealing to a wide range of buyers. It provides market rate, single family homes that are more attainable and significantly lower than the median price of a new Boulder County or Denver metro home. Boulder Creek's contribution towards pedestrian improvements related to the Coal Creek Channel Improvements Project. Will connect the neighborhood to Grasso Park and eventually to the Coal Creek and US 36 Regional Trails. Land dedication adjacent to Coal Creek will allow the town to own and control this portion of the creek. The we cottages provide an intermediate transition in scale from McCaslin Boulevard and downtown Superior. Which is zoned for buildings up to five stories and 65 feet tall to original town. Improved access to McCaslin Boulevard for existing residents. Will provide a second point of access for original town for emergency and public safety purposes. I thank you for your patience and hearing our story, we're very excited to bring we cottage to Superior. That concludes my presentation, we will stand by with any questions.
Alright, thanks Mike. If you could unshare, that would be great, thank. Thank you, perfect. Alright, so. Commissioners, as an opportunity to. Ask questions, not really a time to start stating position or thoughts on it, just do you have any questions for the? For the developer, I'll go backwards this time and start with Jason and then follow in with Ben. So Jason, do you have any questions to start with?
Not right now, I need to think about this a little bit more, I just unfortunately, I was out of town and didn't receive the packet until late last night, so. It was a good presentation and I.
We lost that last part, but okay to move on to Ben. Ben, you're up and then Jerry, you'll follow Ben.
Yeah, I guess the only question I have at this point or concern and I'll frame it as a question is. The, the homes that front McCaslin, how well. Buffeted or insulated are they from vehicle traffic on McCaslin specifically noise? I, sometimes we have those 3D renderings and you can get a really good idea of grade and, and what's in between the road and the houses, but I, I just don't have a good grasp yet of. Of are we setting some people up to be disgruntled homeowners in the future right there next to McCaslin?
Yeah, good question. Is it appropriate for me to field this?
Yes.
Share my screen real quick here. You, you raised a good point, so we're kind of down to grade. As you come off the roundabout here, and as you move towards the south of the site here. It really does drop off in grade, these homes are down significantly from McCaslin in this area. And you gradually kind of come up towards McCaslin as you go along this path here. The homes are setback, I, I noted it in my project narrative, I don't have that handy, but. I believe it's, it's about 100 plus feet here and it goes up to. I believe over 150 feet, 170 feet down, down in this area. I don't believe any home gets closer than 80 to 100 feet here, maybe about, about that. So we did maintain a very large buffer, there is some grade in topo which works to our advantage. So that you do see the fronts of these homes, but they are sitting down and they are very well buffered from McCaslin. And that was key to our proposal here, we didn't really want to bring them any further closer, there was other constraints as well, but we weren't really comfortable with moving these homes any closer to McCaslin. Than they are, so. Hope that answers your question.
Alright, are any of those three story?
These two right here are three story.
Anything else Ben?
That's it for me.
Alright, if you could unshare that again for me, just so I see you heard that. Jerry, if you could, if you have any questions, go ahead and Commissioner Harper and David, you'll go next.
Thank you Jeremy McCool, Mr. Cooper, great presentation. I've always been impressed with Boulder Creek Neighborhood's creativity. And especially coming up with such a creative solution for this property. And I'm sure that wasn't easy as, as Stephen alluded to earlier. And you did as well, you've, you've had several renditions of, of what to do with this property. Just a real quick question for one of my fellow commissioners, how many handicap parking spaces are going to be in this area?
There'll be two handicap spaces, they are at the. There are two spaces, one on each side on those alley parking spaces.
On the, the north end and the south end?
Correct. Yeah, there's actually two, the two are located on the south side, so there's two different parking areas on the south side and that's where they will be.
Anything else Jerry?
Yes. So that one got answered. They got answered. Was there any consideration by Boulder Creek Neighborhoods about deed restricting any of these properties for, for seriously low income? And attainable housing candidates?
Yeah, unfortunately, the economics of this project did not, did not allow for that. We, we typically consider this a market rate attainable product and.
I read that, yes.
That's, that's the way that we, that's our approach to, I don't want to say solving the affordability problem in Colorado, but. But we constantly encourage cities to do everything they can to encourage this type of housing, which we consider more workforce housing. That makes it more attainable to a couple or a single person. Or a person with one child perhaps to buy a new home, so. We feel that this is a very powerful way to bring more attainable housing is via the market. As opposed to subsidized housing. But yeah, we've, we, we have, we were not able to do that on this, this property.
And again, great presentation, thank you for your creativity.
Thanks.
Thanks Commissioner Malia. Commissioner Harper, you're up next, do you have any questions for the, and then Commissioner Ritchie, you're up next.
I'm sure I have two. Yeah, let my, let me add my thanks to your presentation, I thought it was excellent. One of the questions I have is that many of the down, empty nesters and downsizers, I know. What they're really looking for is main floor living. That's not obvious from the outside of your. Buildings, is it actually available on the inside?
It, it is not, these, these homes all have living space on the lower level of the home. You bring up a good point. It's, it's really interesting, this product, because obviously we build a lot of active adult product and main floor masters are the, the heart and soul of that product. But we really, it's, it's an interesting buyer for the we cottage in terms of the older buyer. Because they are a down, a downsizer, downshifter, looking for just a simple lock and leave detached house. And the, the folks that we talked to particularly, I remember talking to a couple out at Stapleton. And they, they don't mind the stairs. So, you know, this, the, the upper, having your bedroom on the upper level, it's, it's not ideal for older folks, but for a lot of folks, it's, it's just fine. Depending on where you, where you are in life. Unfortunately, a main floor master takes a very wide home. Either deep or wide, and these are obviously on very small footprints. So the bedrooms need to go upstairs.
My, my second question is about the. My second question is about the HOA. As I read it, you're planning to have a common HOA, which will cover both your. Phase one development and phase two development, although those look as if they'll be very kind, different kind of properties. And probably occupied by quite different kinds of people. HOAs, I have limited experience, but they can be fraught with difficulty. How's that going to work?
I don't think that the buyer. Our 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 single-family homes that we built out here are not our typical product that we build. There's a reason for that, that it's related to the lot size. It's related to high groundwater and we couldn't put in a basement. So we couldn't put patio homes. That would make economic sense for us here. Those homes do folk a couple of those, I believe, two of those at least have a main floor master. And they are low maintenance on the front yards. The single-family homes are kind of a hybrid product for us. And so it's not, we don't see that as an older demographic. I don't believe that it is. It's more of a family product. There might be some older folks in there. But there really isn't going to, we don't anticipate a big disconnect here in terms of the demographics, in terms of the buyer profile. We Cottage does not attract families. It attracts singles, it attracts couples. And possibly one kid, but in a typical Wee Cottage neighborhood. We the anecdotal data that I've collected from our sales team says there's about two to three children in a neighborhood. So it's really not school kids and families. It's not starter housing either. It's not first time home buyers. It's really people looking for a lifestyle. Difference, and that's why we love Wee Cottage, because we don't really consider ourselves an active adult. Builder. We're a low maintenance builder and a lifestyle builder in that sense. So since both products are low maintenance and I really see these as kind of appealing to a very similar somewhat similar demographic, not terribly different, probably more families. In our single-family homes and more. Some older couples or younger couples in the Wee cottages. So yeah, that's I don't think there will be a disconnect in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Harper, also I didn't don't believe I correct clarified the irrigation, the snow plowing, and I apologize for that. We did consider the snow plowing here. Obviously, there is a lot of alley here to plow. We did work with our landscape architect to make sure that the ends of those alleys. Where the parking is, that there are big areas where we can stack snow. At the ends of those alleys, we didn't put a lot of sensitive flowers and stuff there. So they can. I'm not a snow plowing expert, but they are generally going to push all that snow to the ends of the alleys and and that's where they'll be stacking the snow. And then in terms of the irrigation. We the the town makes us irrigate native areas. Particularly if it's disturbed and we will, I believe, irrigate all of our land between McCaslin, all the native areas there to get it established. Between these homes and McCaslin.
I hope it works on the development I've lived. We've had quite a lot of trouble trying to do that.
Yeah, we always struggle with that as well, but. We do our best.
Yeah, thanks for remembering to answer those, Mike. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Thank you. What is your anticipated construction schedule and? Do you anticipate any additional impacts from construction on the neighborhood that they're not already experiencing now, just given what's kind of happening on phase one?
Yeah, the good news is is our pace on the single-family homes is going faster than expected, given the. I'm. I'm confident that it will be mostly potentially built it built out by the time we go vertical on Wee Cottage. Not to say that there won't be impacts from construction on this neighborhood. We did hear from one of our neighbors in there. He had some concerns about the parking that we're proposing and the circulation. But it's it's, you know, it's construction traffic out there. There's big trucks parked on the streets. It's hard to turn around. We haven't built Douglas Street connecting to the roundabout yet. So I think there's an interim condition right here, which is most unpleasant for folks. So we feel that when we build this phase two out. Building these streets per, you know, per city code. Everything will be functioning much better. In terms of the timing. We will hopefully get break ground on land development. This fall and untimely probably to get it finished this year. Hopefully we can, but. Probably into the beginning part of next year to start vertical construction. We can build these homes fairly quickly in about three to four months. So I would anticipate probably late spring, early summer to have a model completed.
Okay. For now, I'm good. I may have additional questions, so just based on what we hear from the neighbors.
And Mike, in your presentation of the homes at Stapleton and Erie Commons, I think is the one you. Compared most likely to. This development, did I get that right?
Correct.
What one of the lot sizes in those pictures you showed us for Stapleton and Erie Commons for your Wee Homes?
The lot sizes for Stapleton were exactly this 26 and a half feet wide by. Those were a little bit deeper, 80 feet, I want to say. Because they had the opportunity, that was back when we were doing detached garages on some of these with a little backyard. So those lots need to be a little bit deeper. When we attach the garages like you see here and we bring all the living to the front of the house and offer a bigger front porch. And a little front yard as opposed to a little backyard. They're actually a little, the the lots get a little bit less deep. But very similar, not more than I would say 10 to 15 feet in depth difference, but the width would be the same. What we're planning at Erie Commons matches this exactly. Erie Commons is a prototype that we developed. I didn't show you the plan for that, but it's a much bigger neighborhood. And it's got every home on a, we call it a cluster or a pod. That rings around these little courtyard pocket park areas, similar to like you see in Stapleton. And that plan, I wish I had shown it, but we took some of those principles and applied them here, but this site is much different and much smaller. So we couldn't do that everywhere here. But what works here really well is that every home it fronts to some sort of big buffer. Or landscape area. I mean, some of them along the street, but all the other ones are are you can if you can extend, you know, the theoretical front yard off the fronts of these homes past their little fence line. That that's the goal here is that they feel like they live to the front and they're living out to common open space areas. And so they even the homes that are, you know, living to the south there and facing the south. You know, they're facing hundreds of acres of open space and and a little more manicured area in front of their homes. So I really think that it was very. Interesting how this came about because we're planning this prototypical design at Erie Commons. And then developing this at the same time. So it was very interesting to apply and try to achieve those same goals here. In a different context where we don't have the real estate to, you know, install the true form of this cluster cottage.
Chair, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. I was going to go around one more time. Jason, do you have it? Anything else? And just raise your hand up if you you want me to.
I think everything that I would have had a question for has been answered. Thanks.
Okay, alright. Okay, Commissioner Harper.
I think in the material you sent, it said that the. Front yards will actually be picked by the homeowners. How is that going to be controlled?
Yeah, good point of clarification. We are not going, we don't plan on imposing any limitations or. Pre-design or anything like that that's going to restrict it. I think it will be limited in terms of if you can put turf in there, obviously there will be restrictions with geotechnical requirements. To be at least five feet away from the house. So if it's a five-foot front yard. You're not going to be able to put a strip of turf in there without voiding your warranty on your foundation. In areas where they have a slightly smaller plan, they don't pick the bigger porch. They might be able to put a small little turf and turf area in there. But it will be regulated by the by the DRC of our HOA. And it will, there's a policy we have is in conjunction with our CCNRs. That requires them to landscape it and get an approval by the DRC. And get that installed. I believe it's within six months. So we're leaving it kind of open. We don't want to be too, it's not a huge area and we don't want to. Go and tell people what what to do and not to do. But there will be a just a general control with that policy that we have, which is also applied to the single-family homes. And their backyards that they have in the similar process with that. They have to get. Submit a design to us and then install it within six months, so. We'll extend that policy to these Wee cottages.
In the interest of full disclosure, I should say I actually went and looked at Blue Vista. And pretty much all landscaping looked like rock and I didn't think it looked very nice.
Yeah, and I and I can I concur. I believe those yards are a little bit bigger than these. And. If you look at some of those renderings that we have, if you look at what a five-foot and a seven-foot yard is, it's not really a yard. It's really an area to let your dog out. And not be a nuisance and have them, your dog go pee in the common area and and that that regard. So there's just a lot of people have dogs here and that's just a huge factor. If we're not going to give them a backyard. We got to give them a little front yard. And then from there, it's a choice. We're offering these big front porches on here. Which we. Think a lot of people will probably get those so that you can put a table and chairs on there if it's a nine-foot deep porch. And if they do, there's just going to be a little area to put some rose bushes and an area to let your dog out. And that's really going to be about it. So I don't think it's going to be like a Blue Vista situation. And the reason why we did that at Blue Vista. We wouldn't have done any of those front yard areas, but we were trying to blend those homes that you saw the front yards into the existing HOA where they do have front yards. And there I think there was only about 15 or 20 homes that had those front yard areas. Where it really wasn't something that we wanted to do in that community. But that was an agreement that we had with their HOA to blend those homes that were kind of separate from ours. To have those blend into that neighborhood. So I kind of concur. I don't like the way the fencing looked out there and the way that that came off. And that's why we're doing something differently here where there's a fence and then there's a little landscape strip and then the sidewalk. Where there, I think the fence is like right on a sidewalk and it just, it's kind of a harsh treatment. So that was just an anomaly at Blue Vista and most of the homes don't have any front yards. It's just common area landscaping the fronts.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? If not, I'm going to move on to public comment. So if the. Public would like to comment, looks like everybody's on a computer. If you're not, it's star nine to raise your hand. But if you raise your hand, I'll just start at the top of the list and staff will unmute you and somehow let you know. And so with that, we'll start with Megan Williams. If you could keep your comments to five minutes or less, I'll have a timer going and I'll kind of give you a heads up if you're running long.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the introduction. My name is Megan Williams. I'm the daughter of a resident, longtime resident. On South Third Avenue. My mother is Suzanne Sawyer Ratliff. I will do my best to keep this at five minutes and I thank you very much for your time. My first point is less about the development and more about the notification of the community. I must say, I took great offense in learning of this meeting with less than 48 hours, 48 hours prior to. This meeting this evening. The fact that we received this message at 5:16 on a Friday evening. On a publicly recognized holiday. And particularly a very emotionally charged public. Publicly acknowledged holiday was a real affront to people of color in our community and also to. Those who are in support of respect of the June 19, Juneteenth holiday and wanted that to be noted for the record. You know, at a time of racial strife in our country, sensitivity should be coming from our town. So my main question is why the need for multiple variances? We have town standards in place to ensure quality of life throughout our community and it seems to me. The number of variances, whether it's three stories, building right up to the sidewalk begs a lot of question. Why we're needing to bend so much to accommodate development on the Rogers Farm property? I also think that having special last minute meetings. With very little community notification. Doesn't sit well with the greater community, so I'd like to flag that as a point of concern. Mr. Cooper, thank you very much for a very polished presentation. I it's clear you've put a lot, a great deal of thought and consideration. To paint a very lovely portrait of life on the porch in the 50s. I fear that the reality and the impact on residents of. The original town might be quite different in the long run. With 28 homes going in on the current phase one of your development, we have already tripled or doubled in size south of the bridge. I think if you look closely at the community in existence on Second and Third Avenue. South of the bridge, you'll find no more than 15 homes. On similar acreage and the impact both in terms of parking cars, traffic, foot traffic. Will be considerable on existing residents. That said, we look forward to welcoming. Our new neighbors under the current development that is in place. I want to be very clear that Wee cottages are not the objection. We are absolutely. In support of having middle income homes available. I think my main objection or main concern is twofold. Number one, what requires 61 homes on eight acres of land? It's simply too crowded for the for the community and. Requiring too many bending of guidelines in place standards set by the town to ensure quality of life in our community. Continuing, I would like to say we appreciate that you put forth effort to reach the community on June. Second and introductory. Meeting to discuss the project is very much appreciated. But a lack or minimal attendance should not be confused with green lighting for development. We do appreciate conversation with the community south of the bridge, north of the bridge and in the original town. As longtime residents and many residents are descendants of the founders, so we look to you to. Ensure that we have comfort level with development that's coming in. Based on what I've heard this evening, I have great concern. Over the idea that we're going to be going three stories. That homes will be three feet apart and nearly tripling the population. Basically already. Further contributing to crowded streets and a hindering of quality of life. That we have for many years cherished in the original town. So that said, we're poised to welcome new neighbors. And we look to you to make adjustments in your proposal. That might better accommodate the quality of life in the original town and. More closely adhere to the standards put forth by the town to ensure quality of life in our in our community. So. With that, I thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you, Megan. And alright, we've got Adam Fells up next.
Hi, and my name is Adam Fells and. I appreciate you guys doing this meeting. I want to thank the Rogers Farm. Folks for their presentation as well as Superior staff and board for allowing us to contribute tonight. I agree with. Everything that's been said, it's a. Well-thought-out program and I think as a new resident here at 402. Second Street here in Rogers Farm, I think that the idea of having. Wee cottages and smaller homes that reach that middle income. Home buyers excellent and well thought out. So in general, my wife and I are both in favor. Of that strip of land, you know, having a well-thought-out alley serviced. Wee Cottage development. So with that being said, here are some concerns and thoughts for staff. As well as Rogers Farm as we before we get to approval. I think there's no doubt that the idea of Wee cottages serving. Folks who generally would not have kids is probably true in other areas, but not in Boulder County. I know not just my own daughter and her future husband, as well as many other. Twenty-somethings who look forward to Wee cottages and having their first and or second child in those homes. As their starter home. So I think we should. Think about that mold not holding true for this. So I think we should think about that mold not holding true for this. I also agree that that many of our new buyers that will be in that neighborhood are likely to be single and likely to have and also downsizers. So I just could imagine lots of pets, which I think is great and also small children. So I want us to think about how we can go from sixty plus homes to a more reasonable number, whatever that number is. In my email to staff, I thought maybe, maybe fifty, but I don't really know the exact number. What I'd like to see us look at architecturally is as few variants as possible because I think the original town residents have been really accommodating to all of us, you know, new residents and how much space we take up and I appreciate their welcoming attitude and they're very genuine in welcoming us. It's really appreciated. With that being said, I think some pocket parks that are a little larger would go a long way to creating both sound buffer as well as places for people to walk their their carriages and their dogs. I do think that parking is really an issue. When you service alleys for snow and trash as well as parking, they get congested very quickly. Here's what I'd like to say about that. I think our alleyway concept is excellent. But when you look at small homes, most of our residents who move in there probably will need their garages for storage. If only fifty percent use their garage for storages, that would push somewhere between twenty-five and fifty homeowners to park on the street or in those extra spaces as described. So I do think that even though Boulder Creek did an excellent job and I totally love their work, projecting extra parking, I think every parking space will be used at all times. And my final concern is First Street being a thoroughfare. I do think that people will be going around in either a single direction or both directions. And that will create a tremendous amount of pressure on First Street, which will force, I think, quite a few more than five to ten percent down Thomas and then across Second, heading over the bridge. And the bridge is just wide enough, as you know, to barely accommodate passing traffic. For those of you who don't know, and I'm new to this, our traffic on Second Street with bikers, hikers and strollers is extraordinary. I think it's something to celebrate as they access the trails. But if we push more traffic from wee cottages in and out on Second, we run the risk of just not enough room for our bikers, hikers and and all of our local residents who have been in original town for a long time. So I hope that we can think about some traffic flow around First and how to get them out onto Douglas and around the roundabout in a safe way, which might mean wider streets. Additional parking for sure and how we want people to move, how we want the traffic to move around there so that everyone is safe. So I want to thank everybody for their work. I want to thank Boulder Creek Homes for all their work. And my final comment to Boulder Creek is not to staff is I really would not like to have the HOA be the same HOA. We are very different types of buyers and I think we have very different types of lots. We have very different types of needs and I can't imagine getting fifty members of the wee cottages or more and more and the twenty-eight here to find agreement on major improvements on fence and things like that. So I would like staff to consider separating our HOAs. Thank you very much for your consideration. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any additional public comment. I'll give people another round here to raise their hand if they'd like to speak to this. All right, Ted Chavez Chavez, you're up. And when we get you unmuted, just give us your name and address. That would be great. Who's doing the unmuting?
How about now?
There we go. We got you. All right.
Okay, Ted Chavez, four oh one South Second. Cooper, that was a great presentation. I did notice a change in the parking, parking, extra parking spaces from the meeting of June second or maybe I just didn't understand, but I don't think we counted on June second, First Avenue parking. And I know we did talk about Douglas parking. But I also am very concerned of the traffic that's coming through Second Avenue right now. We got a lot. It's not just construction. We still got the bikers, our people going to the trails, parking up on the railroad bed there. So that's still a lot of traffic going that direction. We have a lot of U-turns going on on Second in Douglas. Not just construction people. It's people that are just lost. I get it. It may change. But my main concern is graduation party. I mean, I hear you guys saying this is for not little kids, which really concerns me because that's why we got Children's Park over here. And that brings into another solution. If we're going to vacate Thomas Street, then why not vacate this park, Children's Park over here because it's considered a road as well. So if we're going to, if we're going to consider vacating roads, then we need to look at Children's Park and then the city could buy it back from landlords and keep it as a park. But we, there's just tons of traffic coming this way. And you're right. I mean, the snow plowing on Second Avenue has tremendously changed. They, our city trucks come through, push the snow. Then they come across the street and do their little parking spot there on Second Avenue. They push it right into the middle of Second Avenue. And our city trucks have already been through. So now we're contending with iceberg sitting in the middle of the street. Talked to our manager about this couple of times. Didn't see any improvements from the HOA portion of it. But I can't imagine them pushing that much snow down an alley off the edge into that ditch over there. And where's that water going to go to? I know you guys have plans to drain it all down towards McCaslin, but that water off the hill, the coal mine hill here, which you guys call Mayhoffers Open Space, that throws a lot of water down to the railroad bed, over to the big tree underneath the road into that area as well. So all we're doing is creating mosquito heaven. So we really need to think about more snow plowing in that, in that situation because that water does not drain from there. Now, I don't know if you guys have been out and about checking that situation out, but I think you guys need to really look at that. If they're not going to start this project right soon, you guys really need to see where the water falls and where it's going. Because I'm telling you right now, it's been changed ten times since I've lived here. I've been here since I was two years old. That's always been mosquito heaven. So I think you guys really need to look into that and have that drainage on that portion of the hill. Make sure it's absolutely going down to the creek. But when you guys are making crosswalks now that that direction, what are you going to do with all the mosquitoes? So bringing in sixty-one more homes in an eight acre, eight acre, eight acre, that's quite a bit. That is quite a bit. We didn't even anticipate this. When this first started, it was eighty-four ranch homes in that whole entire area which the city turned down. Now you're going to throw in sixty-one additional to the twenty-seven that's already there. That just doesn't make any sense. We, I just think we need to slow down and think about this building. I'm not saying that they couldn't do a good job and I'm with Adam Felt saying maybe downsizing it. Bring the population of it down. And as far as the HOA goes on that stuff, you know, I do see problems. HOA don't even let you put fire planters in front of your yard, but you're saying you could put rose bushes in front of these houses? Is that you guys doing it or is that the owners doing it? I mean, that's what I'd like to know because HOA is pretty tough and when they don't allow you to do something, you know, it gets pretty depressing. So Megan, thank you for all you said. You said a mouthful. Susan, thank you. You guys are on top of it. I really do think that this really needs to be looked at before we put sixty-one more residents in an eight acre area. And you only have two streets. That's all that's there. You're talking alleys and two streets. So let's really look at this and see what we want to do. Thank you very much for your time. I know you guys will work hard on this. And like I said, Cooper, you did a great job. I think Stephen, you did a great job. Let's, let's work on this together, though. Let's just, I think it needs to be downsized. Okay? I'm not trying to stop building. I get you guys want to build and make money. But sixty-one over there, that's a lot. I'd rather have had the eighty-four ranch homes sitting over there than having all this other stuff. So thank you very much for listening and we'll talk to you later.
Thanks, Dan. All right, one other person who's already spoken. I just want to see before I allow her to speak for another minute. A call in listener is on there at three oh three five eight nine nine two two seven. We can unmute them, let them speak and if you just give us your name and address, Megan, go for it. Can't really hear you. Can you improve your? That's a little better.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Well, you know, this is a wonderful segue because I want to tell you this is again Suzanne Sawyer-Ratliff.
If you could give us your name and address, please. We didn't hear that in the beginning.
Okay, Suzanne Sawyer-Ratliff.
Got it.
Four oh five South Third Avenue.
Got you.
So this is a wonderful opportunity for me to start by saying to you this Zoom access, I've been on a couple of Zoom meetings. But this would be the first really strongly interactive Zoom meeting. I managed after about twenty minutes to go from audio access to see you all and I can see you all right now on my laptop screen. However, pushing the little thing that said raise hand so that you could see me was not working out. So that brings me to the point of saying to you that you not only have many, many citizens who are not Zoom capable, but you also have coronavirus time where people are having a much harder time finding you. So I guess what I would say, I would ask you as members of the planning commission, what are we doing to be sure that you truly are getting citizen input? And I would also say to Mr. Cooper, I think five people going in on a Zoom meeting that a lot of people didn't know about was not very helpful. I'm seeing Mr. Cooper's hands over and I'm wondering if I walk away from that and share if it might make it easier for you to hear me just on my telephone. I'll try this. Okay, so thank you very much, but I did want to talk about people being able to access you. And I know that you are interested in citizen input.
Suzanne, I don't know if you can do any better with your microphone. You kind of went quiet on us a little bit again. We had you there.
Am I, are you hearing me any better?
That's better. Yep.
All right, I'll try this. Okay, I'm just going to make two points that I don't think were already made. First of all, I'm going with Ted in saying sixty-one is outrageous and insulting to our community. And I would strongly suggest that we not go with that number. I would also say, when I sit here and I hear that we are in scale with original town homes. I live in a rural home and I live a quarter of an acre.
Oh, we're losing you again Suzanne, sorry.
Oh, I'm just sorry that I don't know what to do about.
We got you. That's better. Yep.
Okay, I turned a different angle by the window. When we say that this development is in scale with original towns, I can only say, no, it isn't. I live on a quarter of an acre. There's nothing there that looks like the original town to me. I want to compliment Mr. Cooper and his good development, creative, well done. But that's just for people who are close. And I'm sorry, I get this feeling of block and dogs and children in the door, dogs and children, but there's something really wrong here. And I just want to say to those of you who are listening, sometimes I think this is so hard on you and I respect you so much for your volunteer work, but I feel that you are hamstrung and that you're not able to say, I wouldn't live in that. Or what are we doing by putting sixty-one homes on eight acres? Anyway, I also want to say that I think when we're looking at the Stapleton pictures, the Erie Commons pictures, we're talking about the Blue Vista. We're talking about a whole different thing here. My final comment, I've been following in original town and the whole town of Superior for some time the discussions about what we seem to be calling now attainable housing that we used to call affordable housing, housing, I think there's a relationship here. What I want to say is I'm very much in favor of affordable housing. But I have spoken previously to say what this planning commission and people who preceded you have talked about is affordable housing that gets integrated throughout our community. I would be happy to live next to an affordable housing home. I am very much against affordable or attainable housing ghettos. And I fear that what we are creating here is a kind of a situation does not integrate our community. Different socioeconomic levels. I think we are going to all huge, harsh new area, what we're calling attainably priced homes. And I would suggest to you that this is about to come out well. Thanks so much for listening to me and thank you so much for what you do. And I apologize for my trouble with communications, but I will also say one more time, if I've had a struggle with getting on and being with you tonight, there are many, many more people who are having a struggle and I don't know what you're going to do to reach out to them, but I, maybe, maybe I need to get some staff or trustees and say, this is a problem we're having right now. So thanks again for your time tonight and thank you for your patience and listening to me. Bye-bye.
Well, thank Suzanne. All right, that's probably why Megan was, had her hand up was for Suzanne. Let's see. So any other public comment before we move on? All right.
Just wanted to point out, there is a written comment that was forwarded to you by Martin. So I would just suggest that you take a look at it. One of them is addressed to the town board, the Board of Trustees, but addresses this application. So I would just suggest taking a look at those also as part of the public comments for this.
All right, and it's like Ted, you put your hand back up. If you could make it quick, we'll jump you on here again. Go ahead. Let's get him unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go. Go ahead.
Okay, just letting you guys know, I am representing for my mother who lives next door, my Aunt Carmen who lives next door to her and my uncle that lives next door because Susan's right. They, they can't get on computers and, you know, they're the elderly here. And so I am kind of speaking for them. They're all about me. They know what I'm doing. Trust me. They trust me. So we're all good. But I'm letting you know, I'm speaking for, for other residents. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate that. So Dan, and I apologize. Where is this? Is this something I should read into the record, do you think, or?
You don't need to read it into record. I'm just.
I'm having trouble finding it.
I think it was sent kind of generally to the planning commission. So I would just say, you know, just review it as part of the public record.
Are you talking about the comment from Mr. McLaren? Are you talking about the petition that was?
Are you talking about the comment from Mr. McLaren, or are you talking about the petition that was just forwarded to us?
Right, so just both of them. So the, uh. And then just note the, uh, the petition as well.
All right, I got bopped, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what I was looking for, so.
Can you speak to, um, maybe the petition process, what basis that needs to be, do they need a basis and how, how that works?
Well, I mean, in terms of what was submitted, um, you know, it's part of the, the public record for the, um, for this public hearing. So I, I think just generally, um, you know, you can, you can certainly review it and, and it'll be put into the public record, but I don't think, no, no other type of action or anything like that needs to be taken other than noting it in the public record.
Um, it doesn't affect us, but am I mistaken, Dan, that it does affect the town board public hearing, right? They have to have a two-thirds majority, is that the?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it, it's addressed specifically to the town board. I just wanted to, um, just make you aware of it, you know, for, for purposes of this public record, because it has to do with the same application.
Okay.
Sorry, so I'm not familiar with these code sections, so we have a provision in our code, it sounds like that someone can submit a protest to a zoning application that then requires a super majority. This isn't like a referendum petition at this point, this is a protest to the zoning.
It's just a zoning protest, yeah, but it, it is in our code.
Okay.
It, it has to be validated and signed and filled out correctly and then, um, you know, received appropriately and providing all its valid, it, um, the, the vote from the board requires a two-thirds majority to, to change zoning.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll take a look at the petition itself and we're going to provide direction to the, to the Board of Trustees.
Certainly.
Or for the, the planning commission just to, to note it and, um, as a, as part of the public.
Okay, thank you.
And let's see, seeing that we, I think, going to close, public comment, thank you everyone, and, um, if the, if, Mr. Cooper, if you would like to, to respond to some of the comments that were, were made, you have an opportunity to, to speak to those if you'd like to.
Yeah, sure, um, there's several, several things I'd like to touch upon. I really, the, the traffic flow and what's going on out there now, I think that when we put in Douglas Street, all these turnarounds that are happening, I have to believe that that's going to be alleviated in the traffic flow from this neighborhood. The homes on the east side of First Avenue or on the west side of First Avenue and all these wee cottages, I can't envision unless they're going to the Target Center, uh, why they would be going through Old Town, or sorry, Original Town. So I really feel that there's just basic common sense, it says most of these homes are going to be going out via Douglas Street to McCaslin. That's, that's kind of what our traffic report said, um, that ninety-five percent of the traffic will go out to that roundabout, um, unless they're going to, to the shopping center. Um, I think, you know, I did talk to Ted early on when we started building our homes out there, um, about Second Avenue, and I believe that that street is deficient in terms of width. And, um, we added some parking, parallel parking bays on there, but I don't believe it's matching, um, First Avenue in terms of width and parking and, and that total street section. So I hope that people aren't comparing that to what's, what's out on First Avenue, what Douglas Street is going to be. Those are per, uh, per city standards. But I think it's all going to get cleaned up at the end of the day when, when all this, all these streets are built and all these alleys are built. Um, you know, the parking, it's, we, we've done what we can to put as much parking in areas where we're trying to make it as convenient, um, as possible to these homes. We don't want to design our communities to parking, but it's obviously a very, very important part of it. We can't control what people do in their garages, um, but we can control, or the HOA can control, and the, I don't know about the police, but the HOA can control, um, who's parking in these parking stalls when they're intended for guest and visitor parking. Um, and also there's some self-policing there, if those parking spots off-street are in high demand and critical to the, this neighborhood functioning, there is a self-policing, uh, that goes on here as well, that if a car's sitting there for two weeks at a time, um, that, that can also work itself out. And, um, but, but right now, um, we, we've done all we can and we feel, you know, I've given you the numbers of, of, uh, how many cars can park out there. I don't want to just patently say it's going to be fine, um, parking, you know, particularly in these types of situations, it will be challenging and we're trying to get as creative as possible with that. Um, and then just in general, um, you know, I'm not going to get on a, a soapbox for subsidized housing versus what we're calling market rate, uh, attainable housing. We don't use the word affordable housing because that has a connotation with it about subsidized housing, income-qualified housing. And, you know, the, the way to make this happen, it is density and it is, I don't want to say bending the rules, it's creating the rules. We're not bending any rules here, we're rezoning it to a PD and creating new rules. And it's what we've done in other, other cities, other projects, um, with really no objections on other projects in terms of the rules that we're creating. So I, I can't say we'll just take homes out, uh, the density, it's, it's fairly low for wee cottages. We get, um, typically get about ten per acre. Um, and, uh, when we've done this cluster development, we can even get up to twelve to thirteen per acre. We even feel when we get that higher density and, and that configuration, it's actually even a more livable, uh, land plan, um, when we do that. So the, the creating of the rules and the density is actually very intentional and, and to remove it would be at the detriment of the project altogether. So that's all I can really say on, on that part of it. The drainage, there will be a swell and, and we are considering the drainage that's coming off the hill, the open space on the south of the project, we have a fairly significant deep swell that wraps around the south of the project and, um, and comes through on, between McCaslin and these homes. And, and it, there is just, there's just some basic grade constraints there that it does get very flat. In some areas, we've, we've done what we can with our civil design to make sure that the water is not standing there, with certain drainage techniques. But in terms of the storm drain, we have certainly accommodated that, um, making sure that there's no standing water out there. That will be something that we are, we, we've designed for, but it'll be something to monitor, um, as well going forward, in terms of maintenance, but we're, we're well aware of that and we're proactively, um, you know, designing that to make sure that there's no standing water and mosquitoes out there. Um, and certainly no turf in the area where, where that swell is, it'll be more native areas, so it won't be a lot of irrigation water being collected there. Gosh, what else? You know, the, the communication here, I, I, at, at some point, I, I know it's challenging with coronavirus and virtual meetings, it's frustrating. But at some point, you know, we mail out letters to people, we tell them what's going on. I can't canvas door-to-door and stuff like that, I mean, obviously we're building homes out there and we're talking to a lot of people, um, who live right next to us. But we rely on the process to notify people by writing and hold virtual meetings and put our phone numbers and email addresses on there. I certainly would be more than happy to go meet with people, um, with safe social distancing if they wanted to meet one-on-one. I, I'd certainly make myself available in that regard, but we rely on that process to communicate with people in this regard. And if we don't hear from them, if they can't make a virtual meeting, if they don't call me or email me, uh, there's not much more I can, I can do with that than we're, than we're in the public process here, um, communicating. And I, and I agree, that is not an effective way to, to handle this process. So I apologize, it's just the world we're in here, um, but we did all we can to follow the process and make ourselves available to, uh, hear residents' concerns. The HOA, I don't have an answer on that, that's an interesting, uh, proposal. When we set up this HOA, we did accommodate, uh, the, this phase two. At, at first, we were considering townhomes, um, we've amended that to be wee cottages, but the intention here was always to have one HOA, one, uh, one body, one management company to maintain this community, um, with two different housing types. Certainly townhomes and those single-family homes would, would have, we, we were planning on that and they're even more different than wee cottages and those single-family homes perhaps. But we don't see any issues with that, um, both of these home types have a little small yard, have a little backyard, have a little fence, be it a picket fence or a privacy fence. We don't typically build fences at all, but, um, which is unusual. But we feel like there's, there's kind of a, the same thing, it's a slightly different scale. I personally don't see any issues with that, we'll certainly talk to internally and, um, uh, and vet that out a little bit more to see, see, to see what makes sense. But the intention here was always to have one HOA, um, and that's how it's been set up. So to change it at this point, my guess is that would be more problematic than anything, um, in terms of, in terms of that. Um, and I think that's, that's about it. Yeah, that concludes.
Get myself unmuted, thanks Mike. All right, um, well, at this point, you know, my, my sense is to leave the public hearing open and, and, you know, ask some questions or get some comments from, from commissioners and talk through this a little bit. There's probably going to be a need to get some feedback from staff and and the applicant, um, as we talk through this, so. I don't know, so I mean, I, I have a lot to say, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to wait too, does anybody want to? Chime in, go ahead Commissioner Ritchie.
Yeah, so thank you, um, I just have some questions as it relates to density, on how the code works. And I know Stephen, you covered it in the staff report, that basically how the code measures density this project meets, but can you talk about that a little bit again, just, um, to set the stage of, you know, is the public land dedication area included that, so we do gross density in Superior if I remember right. So how the density relates to the code without the variance requests? The variance requests, I think, are just more due to lot size and setbacks. And then if in staff's opinion, this meets the density kind of anticipated in the comp plan?
And can I tack on to that, because I have a, I have a similar question, I think it's, it's similar enough that.
Yeah.
It, RM zoning has requirements, higher setbacks, uh, open, uh, lot coverage, um, open space requirements. I, I, I mean, what, what does this eight acres look like in standard zoning, the way we have today, right? Compared to, you know, all of these variances, so I don't know if that conflicts too much with what Commissioner Ritchie says, but.
I think it's all tied together.
I need to balance what this is, because I, I can't make a decision on this without understanding what the existing zoning would, would allow them to do and what it might look like, right, which.
So, can you hear me guys?
Yep.
Yes.
I can pull up my, my screen and, and share some stuff, but I'll, I'll start with just a, uh, an attempt at an answer, because density, density is a tricky thing. So I think the first question that, that Lisa's asking is, is whether or not, how we calculate it. And then so, and I, and I think it's a fair question, and I think, you know, I got some comments and some of our discussion, you know, related to, well, you know, the Coal Creek area that's being dedicated isn't a developable, developable area. So there could be some pushback on including that area, even though it is technically. So, so I guess the first thing to clarify is, the way that they've calculated their density at eight units an acre over the entire area is per our code. And if this, if that dedication wasn't part of this proposal, town wouldn't be getting that area of open space and anything along the creek is critical for the town to own and maintain for the safety of all of our Original Town residents. So there is an important component involved in that, and there's a reason behind the fact that it's written the way it is. So it's calculated correctly, but I understand, and I anticipated, I guess, that some people would have some concern about, well, you know, at the end of the day, what's actually developable and what can be done. That's kind of a harder question to answer, because density is based on a couple of things. It's, it's based on acreage for sure, but it's also based on the product type that they propose. So, um, the other thing, I guess, I want to clarify kind of off the front, on, on the beginning, is that I, I know that we're couching this in relation to what can be done in terms of RM zoning, which is the existing zoning, but a PD isn't establishing exceptions to an existing standard, it's establishing a new standard. So these aren't variances, and the, and the comp plan contemplates a density within this area and contemplates both three-story product and it contemplates a density in this area that's between six units an acre and twelve units an acre. So that's, I guess, important to kind of clarify upfront, because when you start splicing this into how you figure out density and taking things out of it in order to kind of get a more, you know, like what could happen out here if these lots were plotted, just like the, the lots were, um, west of, uh, First Avenue. Then you would have like six thousand square foot lots, but you could have a triplex on that lot. And the way that they calculated that, I think it was some thirty-one lots that could be developed in this area. And if you had a triplex on it, that's ninety-three units, if you had a duplex on it, that's sixty-two. So, the density's relative to what the product is. And so I circled back with, with Boulder Creek after getting their, uh, PD application, because one of the other requirements and, or suggestions, I guess, the, the, it's a guiding policy, the, the comp plan, it's not, it's not regulation like we have, but we are going from, you know, a, a regulation of RM zoning to a new standard, and so that's what's being established here. And, and that's what we need to look at, is does that standard make sense, is it compatible, does it meet kind of what the, what was envisioned with a comprehensive plan? And, you know, staff's review of it largely feels like it meets it, you know, there are some changes that were, that were made, you know. The two that come to mind that are, you know, that stand out are, extending the Original Town grid was one of those requirements. And if we were to extend the Original Town grid, we'd have public streets versus the alleys, we don't have that. We would have alleys, but we'd have public streets in addition to the alleys, maybe is a better way to clarify it. But we'd also probably have greater connectivity or more connections and, uh, not the traffic mitigation that Boulder Creek has, has attempted to achieve, which, as I recall, kind of stems from, um, RC Superior's discussion. Uh, concept, that's a concept plan level like three or year, three or plus years ago when they first came in. And they discussed density at that time, totally different town board and, you know, a little bit different product design. So there's all these different elements and I hope I'm kind of getting to your, your question.
No, that was very helpful, Sir.
The other, the other piece of the, the, the comp plan does suggest, uh, uh, twenty-nine hundred ninety-seven square foot minimum lot size. And, and that, I didn't catch that in my memo, so I want to make sure that, that got brought up tonight. But again, like, if you have medium-density residential zoning, which is what the comp plan envisions for this area, and you have a three thousand square foot lot, you can have a duplex or a triplex. So the density does, it's, it's all relative, so it's, I mean, it's a myriad of, of possibilities based on an application and what staff, really, staff can't give you like all the possibilities in the world. I can just kind of give you context of what, what could happen, um, you know, in relation to. And I, and I, and like the, I, I keep referring back or thinking of the Fourth and William product that, that got built on, and comparable lots in a comparable zone district, RM, and those are duplexes on six thousand square foot lots, and that's what a market-driven product, uh, produced. So that could be what we got out here, and one of the original, I mean, Mike touched on, uh, the original proposal that they submitted to us was, um, I, I think they had six, uh, townhome units that were attached. The massing was greater, the context seemed much more out of scale to Original Town. And that's the other thing with the comp plan, is that we have some things that are, you know, you know, it's supposed to fit in with the scale of Original Town, but it's also supposed to provide a transition between Original Town to, uh, Downtown Superior, and it, it's kind of providing an edge on, on McCaslin. And I think that, for the most part, this meets the intent of, of, of that objective in the comp plan as well.
So Stephen, I thought with, with RM zoning on, on that, this large of a lot, they, they would have to do a PD, they, they. They can't just go build, right, they can't just go plat and build, or can they? With this.
They, they don't have a plat. So this area is a bunch of, and I've probably glossed over the, the PD a little bit, or the plat portion of this a little too quickly. This is not a platted area of town, so they, they have to do a subdivision kind of regardless. I, instead of platting, like, if they were to try to do this within the RM zone, they would need to create those standards that are reflected as the contrast, they'd have to create six thousand square foot lots. But on those six thousand square foot lots, they could put multifamily dwellings, you know, and, and really, it's, it's just.
They'd have to put in streets, right, there'd have to be.
Right, it would have to follow that, yep, and then we.
Requirements that are, that are in that zoning, and that's what I'm struggling with, what, you know, what that ends up, you know, kind of looking like. You know, and then, boy, this is an insane number of homes and acres, this is crazy. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what, you know, I mean, I, I vehemently disagree with you that this, that this, that this lines up with our comprehensive plan. I don't think anybody in this town, I've been here for, since nineteen ninety-seven, I have talked with residents in the inner, there's no way in hell anybody thought anything like that would show up on that lot, I'm going to be honest with you, so. anything like that would show up on that lot. I'm going to be honest with you. So, so that's where I'm starting and I apologize. I've got to start there. But so I've, I've got to understand what, you know, if they, if, if we kept the zoning that was there and they had to go through a, you know, a process, I'd like to understand what, what we intended to put there. I don't think this was it. I know it wasn't it. So I, and maybe we misunderstood. We've seen plans after plans, after plans, after plans, after plans for Rogers Farm, you know, and I know they're all just plans and all, none of them got approved, but that builds what? That builds the expectations of the neighborhood, right? And so now we have a neighborhood looking at this going, well, okay, we, we had to let them build two blocks worth of it's nothing like original town, but it was platted. So people want to build their homes on them, they, they can. And so now that was done. And now we're trying to throw 61 homes on, on the remaining eight acres. And so I can't go very far with this until I, until I have at least a little better understanding of what we anticipated, or at least expected with that RM zoning and what our, what our capabilities are. So and Commissioner Harper, feel free to jump in here. So.
This is actually a question I've been trying to resolve with Mr. Williams for the last week and it is very difficult. Clearly, I mean, the, the best I can do, and I think this is probably too amateur, maybe we should ask Boulder Creek neighborhoods, what the alternatives they see are, is that under the current zoning, you can get about, you, you can't build in a floodplain area. Track day. The agricultural urban reserve is not zoned residential medium. There's about 4.4 acres. It's actually zoned residential medium density that you can build on at the moment. At 6,000, 4, 4.4 acres ends up being about 180,000 square feet. If you do it with 6,000 acre, 6,000 square feet lots, I think you can get about 31 lots out of it.
Is that with or without streets?
That's, that's the total. I mean, that's everything. You can get a I mean, that, that's 6,000 square foot lots, but that has to include all the streets and things too. One of the wrinkles in this is that as Steve said, or Claire Williams said, you could build duplexes on triplexes on that. But from a discussion I had earlier today, I think those can only be owned by one person. So for instance, on the duplexes that have been built on Williams and Fourth Street, I, I think what correct me if I'm wrong on this, Steve, he said they actually had to be owned by one person who could rent half of it to somebody else. Is that correct?
So unless there's a condo plat or something like that established on a lot, the, the clarification is when you have one, you have one lot for a duplex. So you only have one ownership of one lot. I guess that's the easiest way to put it. If they wanted to, to try to condoize those individual lots, which I don't believe that they've done, we have to get, that usually comes back to the town. They could get airspace rights to the, to the other unit or something and sell that off separately. But as far as I know, those units were built on one lot with one owner. And I don't know whether or not ownership, you know, people bought them as investment properties and rent out both pieces. Or if one owner lives in one of them and rents out the other, it's nothing that, that's not information that has been disclosed to me. But that's how, I can't tell you that it's, it's one lot, two units and only one individual or entity can own one lot. They can't be shared between two different owners.
And these are details we have to understand. I mean, as, as the planning submission, I mean, come on, we, we this has a dramatic effect on, on this neighborhood. It really does. Dramatic, like crazy dramatic, like for, for anybody to sit there, I mean, you're, you're asking to, there are, there are less homes in original town, 12 blocks of original town than, than there will be in one and a half to two blocks of this area, right? So and, and if you honestly think that, that this traffic is, is all going to go out and up to McCaslin, go through the roundabout and take three lights to go. They're not. They're going to drive through original town, right? So the, the traffic impact, the quality of life, everything that everybody's speaking to is going to be dramatically impacted. And it's, it would be a sin for us to just sit here and say, oh yeah, this looks great. Let's sign it off and go. Without some additional thought and understanding about how we can manage it, what's realistic based on the, the zoning that we have on there now? And what our comprehensive plan has. And I, and I'd like to shut up and, and see what you guys think about the comprehensive plan and how, how you think, you know, those policies line up with this because they don't even come close in my book, how, how they could sit there with a straight face and, and sorry, Stephen, I, I don't struggling with how you're seeing it too. I mean, I, one of my notes is, you know, why, why is staff, let's see, how did I write this? We're, we're all about how does this meet? We're never about how does this not meet, right? So here you are, your town. You, you have a responsibility to the residents and the neighborhood and the people who live here that pay your salary every single day. And what you do, and not you, but stat, what staff does is you, 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 you take a developer and you, you, you line up how it all meets everything. You don't come back from the neighborhood side or the resident side and say how, how it doesn't meet everything. And yeah, and that, that's, that's my struggle. So I, so that means we have to go back and try to do that ourselves. Or try to call you offline and see if we can figure out how to do it. And Commissioner Harper, thank you for, for making that effort. I greatly appreciate that. So I, I would like to hear what other, how other commissioners sort of, I mean, think as well. So I'll, I'll try to be quiet for a minute.
Just going to jump in real quick and say, I appreciate the hard work and analysis that Stephen does.
I, I agree. I, I thought when I asked it that this was a simple question, but it clearly had quite a complicated answer. And the number of potential options was expanding faster than my capability to analyze them.
But that doesn't mean we, we just fast track it because of that, right? That's, that's not right.
No, I agree. I think, I mean, it's part of our due diligence to understand what the existing option is. I mean, that I think has to be the base from which we start.
I mean, I'll ask any of you, if you had eight acres sitting near your house and the options were, there's a zoning on there that would limit what could happen and get it a little softer or quite a bit softer versus literally doubling the size of your neighborhood in, in, in a, in an acre lot, would you want your planning commission and your staff to really work and figure out what the right thing is to do? Cause
Yeah, I'll answer that one. I just approved rezoning to allow residential development directly behind my house at a higher density than this. So yeah, I'll say with a straight face that, that I'll accept higher density next to me for a lot of the reasons that, that exist. I'm not saying that to defend this proposal, but I don't like, I don't like the insinuation that, that original town residents are the only ones being impacted by development.
Oh no, I, I agree. Yeah. That everybody's being impacted. But tripling the size of this, this neighborhood in eight acres is insane. It's, it's just nuts.
So, so commissioners, I would just suggest just kind of keeping questions during this time period and certainly, you know, good discussion, but let's just keep some of the discussion for that. The discussion portion of the public hearing.
Thanks, Dan.
I'll set up. I, I'm sorry.
I prepared some comments. I've been, I've been thinking about this and looking at it for quite a while. So I have a sort of couple of short comments that I could make about it that address some of the issues that you've been talking about.
Commissioner Harper muted.
I thought both the presentations from Steve as usual, and also from Mike Cooper were very helpful. I think these, Boulder Creek neighborhoods has a fine reputation. And I think the houses on Second Avenue look quite good.
You're muted again.
See if a timer on his mute.
I gotta stop. I gotta stop checking it. My initial reaction to this development was quite negative for a couple of reasons. One was because of the 61 units, which I thought was a lot. But the other reason was that the 61 units were achieved by establishing, by sacrificing a lot of common space for small lots. A lot of the, a lot of the space that would normally be in lots to common space. And on this particular project, much of that space isn't particularly useful to the residents. Because it's the block that separates the houses from McCaslin. And it's really, I mean, if it's just native grass, it's not going to be used very much by anybody, although there will be people walking through it. I have to say in response to a question that Commissioner Miller brought up earlier, I actually went down to McCaslin this afternoon to look at it again. Noise level below McCaslin is quite low. That's as Mr. Cooper said. And the reason is one, that the cars are slowing down as they go around the roundabout. And the second is that where the, where the level of the land is below the level of the road, you don't hear very much. And I think I've heard before, but that's basically because sound goes upwards when it goes off the cars.
So, so Harper, I'm sorry to interrupt. I would just suggest that we just kind of keep discussions, the questions to the applicant and to the, and to staff. And then certainly, you know, those comments you can certainly bring up during the internal discussion with the planning.
Okay. Sorry. I'm happy to do that. Maybe I'm just getting ahead of myself.
Oh, not a problem, not a problem. I would just, just say, let's just keep things to, to questions right now for staff and and then you can certainly bring that up during the discussion period.
Okay.
Apology. David, David, let me interrupt for a minute because I'm, I'm a little confused, Dan. At our last meeting, we were asked to keep the public hearing open so that we could have discussions and allow the applicant to be able to respond to some things and concerns. Otherwise we can't get any feedback for what they may or may not want to do. Has something changed? Did I misunderstand what, what?
Well, no, no, just what I'm pointing out is just that right now it would be appropriate to, I mean, certainly you can kind of, you know, illustrate your point, but I, I think it would it's appropriate at this point to just kind of keep it's the, the dialogue to, to questions. And then once you, you close it, close the public hearing and then you can, you can have discussion among the, the commissioners. And then certainly if there's any clarifying points that you need, you can certainly ask town staff. You know, and the applicant at that point also.
So that sounds like that's changed. So we are allowed to communicate with staff and the applicant after the public hearing is closed?
Well, after it's closed, you can certainly, if you have any type of clarifying questions, if you're kind of going into an entirely different field of questioning, then we would just need to reopen. But if, if, if it's, it's just kind of, you know, clarifying questions when you're in the discussion phase, I think that's fine.
Okay. I think I was confused by the last one. We had a, it didn't seem like it went this way. So that's fine. I can direct that. So. All right. Questions?
No, at an appropriate time, I do have some further comments based on my visit to the Blue Vista project.
Agreed. Okay.
I, I have a question, Commissioner McCool. The, the first thing I wrote down after reviewing all this material is for, for the applicant to explain to me why the planning commission in the town of Superior would allow such drastic changes to its codes to accommodate this development that's being proposed. And then I answered my own question with, it's the economics of it. And I'd like to pose that to Mr. Cooper. Do you, do you agree? Do you disagree?
Sorry. So Stephen mentioned and, and I mentioned as well in the presentation, this is a plan development. And in a plan development, you create standards to accommodate the site plan and accommodate the product that you want to build. I wish I had gone into more detail on the comprehensive plan because when I look through the specific plan for the opportunity parcel to Rogers property, it's, it's matching exactly what we are proposing here. And I didn't see anything in there that would suggest otherwise. But, but we are not proposing variances. We're proposing a plan development. Where we've built this product, which has been very successful in other communities, we've done plan developments as well. The We Cottage does not fit into any current zoning code. You have to do a plan development. So we see this as being an attainable, intenuably priced housing product that's in high demand. And we see that in a need in just about every community, let alone Superior. The plan development is the, is the, the document that can make that, that, that allows that to happen. That's why we went away from the RM zoning. The RM zoning, as Stephen mentioned, is a very confused zoning, which says you can do eight dwelling units per acre, but you have to have 6,000 square foot lots or, and you have to have 40% max lot coverage. That doesn't translate into anything that you can build today that's eight dwelling units per acre. It, it, it doesn't match. He's, he's mentioning about putting three units on a lot. I mean, that it's, it's defining a product type that doesn't exist in today's marketplace. And if you look at this product that we're proposing and you like it and, and you think it's something that makes sense, then we do the PD and we define the standards, just like we've done at every other We Cottage neighborhood that we've done. And we honest, to be honest with you, I've, all the ones that we've done in Longmont, in Erie and Thornton, we've never had any objections to the PD standards that we've created. And, and so this would be the first, apologize, that we've gotten pushback on these standards. So obviously every site and project is unique. But the standards that we're proposing are, are absolutely accepted in the marketplace and other municipalities. And, and that's what we're doing. So I would love to go and revisit the comprehensive plan with you in my presentation and we could look through that in more detail because I outlined in a nine-page memo as part of my submittal, how this project does conform to the comprehensive plan and how it does meet all of the goals outlined for the Rogers property opportunity area two. So I, I, I would disagree that it's not, it, it might not meet people who live in original town. It might not meet their interpretation of what the comprehensive plan. But if you read the comprehensive plan, I believe it does meet all of those, all of the goals and policies outlined in there.
Not your interpretation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And like you said, with there, those of us who've been here 20 years and interpretations vary. And that's one of the problems with subjective documents and, and 20 plus years of a variety of plans that quote unquote met the comprehensive plan and so anyway, yeah, and I, yeah.
And, and to clarify that, you know, there were some comments that, you know, this is it, it's not compatible or it's not like original town. And what I would like to qualify that the homes are, the homes are compatible with original town. The intention is not that, not to put small homes on large lots. That would be matching original town. That doesn't, that's not going to ever get built in this day and age. That doesn't, the economics don't work out. There's not a demand for that. It doesn't make any sense to recreate that or to say that that's the only type of neighborhood or designer density that's compatible. I think personally, I think it's, it's short sighted. I think, I think that you can build the, a home that's of the same scale and character in an existing neighborhood at a higher density, and it can be compatible. Particularly when it's a budding and arterial street. It has direct access to that arterial street. And it doesn't materially abut those existing homes. And we have our single family homes in between existing original town and McCaslin Boulevard. So if you think about it, these, these homes are not really going through that existing neighborhood for the most part. Our estimates are that 95% of the traffic will use McCaslin Boulevard. So I, it's, it's a very unique context, the Rogers property. It's not smack dab in the middle of original town. That if you've had a parcel in the middle of original town, it's just a much different animal than being along McCaslin Boulevard. I think you have to look at your comprehensive plan, look at the opportunity area two for the Rogers property. Transitioning from three, three stories down to two stories. They mentioned three stories for the We Cottage site. They mentioned three stories for the We Cottage site. They, they reference multifamily at the edge with, with residential architectural character. Establishing a distinct scale from town center. You can't extend the street grid anymore. We can't fit another public street in there. You would have a frontage road along McCaslin Boulevard if we put another public street in there on a grid pattern. There, you can't do that. It's not achievable. So I believe if you look through the map in this cross section and I don't know how old this comprehensive plan is, I think it's about 10 years old. It's not, it's not that old that, that, the, the content and the vision for this is outdated. So I would highly encourage you to, to consider this context.
Plan, that'd be a great idea. That'd be great for us.
No, I said to your current comprehensive, what I'm proposing is that it isn't, it is in conformance with the current comprehensive plan. And it is in keeping with the proposed, the existing zoning on the site. It's in keeping with eight. I mean, the, the comprehensive calls medium density residential six to 12 dwelling units per acre. We are at most 9.5 units per acre. If you carve out just our development area where the homes are, it's 9.5 dwelling units per acre. I don't see how that doesn't fit into a medium density residential designation on the comprehensive plan of six to 12. So I feel like this, this has minimal impact on original town. I feel like the homes are in scale and compatible with original town. It's at a higher density, but, but again, we have to balance the, the comprehensive plan and compatibility with, with our homes. I think it's a much, it's much more, it's a much different context than saying compatibility on this site versus compatibility smack dab in the original, in the middle of original town. I, I think they're just two different animals and I think.
Mike, you're kind of going over the same thing over and over. I just want to let Jerry keep going if he has additional questions, if you don't mind.
Thanks, Bob, Commissioner McCool. And Mr. Cooper, you're correct. I, I, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that I think your, your design for this is, is what the comprehensive plan is looking for. My, my question was to explain to me why we are changing so much of the, the zoning and things like that. And I, I think I answered my own question. I was asking you if you agreed with me. And that the reason that it's all changing is because of the economics. What Stephen referenced earlier was that we could have a, a fourth and Williams situation all over your project. Which I don't think any of us want to see. And so I think your solution that you've come up with, although some may disagree with you that it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan. I think your, your, your thoughtfulness and the, the creative design of it, plus the economics of making it happen, you can't do it if it doesn't make sense economically, period. And so I think that's, that's the other part of the ball of wax that, that we, you need, people need to understand.
Economics are a reality, absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's got to work. Otherwise you're not going to do it. And then what's plan B? We, we consider doing something like fourth and Williams and, and packing it full of eight units on every, every, every lot. You know? So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, with your proposal or anything. I think, I think Commissioner McCool is, but.
I'm not. I, I don't, I don't, I think it's a beautiful product. I, I really do. And I, and I, in a, in a different place, I, I truly. Don't get me wrong, Mike. I, I don't dislike the product. I, I think there are people who'd love to live in that. I think this, this placement of it is wrong. And the fact that you bought this, not you, but the owner bought this property and now we have to change our, our plans in order to make something fit. That's economically viable is, I'm sorry, it's just bouncing wrong in my, my head. I mean, they, they bought the land. We didn't make them buy it. I mean, so, so anyway. It's, I appreciate it. I really do. I, I hear what you're saying. I, I disagree with the comp plan piece, but you know, that's, that's, we're allowed to disagree. That's okay. And yeah. Hey, go ahead, Ben.
In the spirit of continuing to ask questions at the moment, I think you and Commissioner Ritchie really nailed it for me. I'm still trying to define what would be built there absent this ask to change to a PD. And to me, there's still not a clear answer on that. I, I think Stephen did his best job, but I think the answer is just, we don't know. And that's what's making this hard because there's an ask and I think us naturally want to know what the town is getting in exchange for that ask. And I, I understand it's a little bit of open space and a more innovative product type that personally appeals to me more than probably what would have been built. But I think we're going to be kind of stuck there. It seems like a lot of us have that same question of what, what was supposed to be here if nothing changed.
Can I respond real quick with some additional context? So I did the calculation just for fourth and William because that is built and it is, it's applicable. It's the same zone district. It's actually a larger lot. So they have 7,000 foot lots there. Because it's all plotted as, as original town, 50 feet wide, 140 feet deep lots. And there's six units over 21,000 square feet, which equates to 12 and a half units an acre. And, and that happened because the, and that's allowable because the eight dwelling units an acre doesn't kick in until you have a certain acreage and a certain, I think it's a minimum of six lots. It's two acres and a minimum of six lots or something like that. So that's, that can happen if this got developed piecemeal. So that's the context. But I, you know, I apologize to Commissioner, Commissioner McCool, if you didn't feel like I provided the actual context or comparisons. Comparisons are endless. I also kind of feel like, I guess I assume that we have some perspective of what can be built out here. We went through the process with Clarion. And we looked at original town and we looked at providing different design standards. We looked at what could be built and we looked at. So I, I guess I just assumed that most of us had some understanding of what that potential was already, but.
I really liked. I, there were, there were plans that really came by and, you know, the town decided to, 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 to not do the last one. And so they went and built their, but they, they built their use by right. And then that left them with this piece. And so that left them with this piece. And so now they got to do something with this piece. But just because we didn't respond to and didn't like the, the last PD that came through, they decided to go and build two blocks worth of flat that they had a right to build by use by right. And that left what's there now. And so, yeah, now here we sit and trying to figure out what, what to do, right? I mean, instead of going back through and planning that whole Rogers farm, like would have been nice in the first place, but they didn't want to do that. And so now here we are, you know, and, and not, not, not Boulder Creek builders, Mike, this isn't you. This is, I mean, this was, this is the owner of the property, right? So, so I don't want to lose context of what, what happened here, right? And, and that's all. So, I mean, I suspect this will go through. I, I'm just, I, I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of things. And this just doesn't feel good. That's all.
I had some other questions. I'm not sure if this is for Chris McGranahan or for Alex, but could you talk a little bit about the assumptions in the traffic study? And why you think 90 to 95% is realistic, given, you know, the closest grocery stores and service areas are, you know, while more circuitous, probably a lot more relaxing of a trip journey to go to Target and Costco kind of through original town.
Alex, are you there?
I'm here. I'm waiting for Chris to get on. Is he still around?
Yeah, this is Chris. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thanks.
So Alex, do you want to say anything first? You want me to just?
Why don't you go ahead? Why don't you try, go ahead, Chris?
Sure. So when we looked at this, this is Chris McGranahan with LSC Transportation Consultants, 1889 York Street, Denver, Colorado. And we did the traffic study for Rogers Farm. We also did a lot of the work for downtown Superior to the east. And so we're very familiar with the roundabout and all the connections. We also were involved with the lanterns at Rock Creek with Mr. Cooper in the last year or two. So we're very familiar with, you know, if you, if any of you watched that process, you know, some of you, I think we're on the planning commission at the time that, you know, we did a lot of detail Alex and I did showing trips from different, different parts of the project and background traffic and other stuff. So on this Rogers Farm project, when I worked with Alex, he, he's like, you know, we need to be able to talk about the traffic on and, and who's going to go through original Superior and who's going to use McCaslin. And so the first thing we did in our traffic study, the, the latest version that we submitted, we, we looked and saw, when Douglas Street is connected to the roundabout, there's a lot of existing residents, some original Superior residents and some newer homes in original Superior that are going to redirect from Second Street over to the roundabout. So it's particularly ones that want to go south or into the town, downtown Superior. So we, the first thing we did is we took the traffic on second and reassigned some of it to the roundabout. So that's the first thing we did was if you built all the roadways that Boulder, that the applicant's going to build and didn't build the 61 homes, you would have better connectivity for everybody that's left over. And so that reduces the traffic on second. Then when you add in the new homes, you add that traffic pack in. And most of the vehicles want to go to 36 to the downtown Superior or south on McCaslin. There is some, there will be some folks that want to go to Costco or Target or one of the places over there. Those are the folks we feel are going to use the, the existing grid of Second Street up past Williams up to Coal Creek and get over to the Superior Marketplace. So the reason why Mike said five to 10% and the traffic study actually shows 5% going to the west side of McCaslin, if you will, and 90%, 5% of the trips going out to the roundabout. The reason we, he and I picked five to 10 instead of just five is that we feel that in the evening, as people are coming off 36 or coming from Louisville, south of McCaslin, there'll be a handful of them that turn at Coal Creek and then come down Second Street. We don't know, I, we don't think folks are going to do that to leave to go north, let's say to Louisville, because you can't turn left onto McCaslin at Coal Creek. So now you have to go even further up to Marshall. So we feel like the roundabout is going to be the preferred option. The other thing to keep in mind too at the roundabout is if that roundabout at McCaslin had been a traffic signal, the two side roads, the west one being Douglas would be secondary to McCaslin. It would get a minimal amount of green time. But because it's a roundabout in the morning, the people coming off Douglas Street from this project actually get preferential treatment to the northbound McCaslin movement, which is the heavy commuter movement. So these folks will get out pretty easily in the morning. So we think that, you know, it's, it's, you know, if it was a horrible level of service, then yeah, maybe some people will go the other way because of the, the time travel, the, the travel time comparison. But this, this movement onto the roundabout, I think is going to work quite well. So we feel, you know, five to 10% using the local street system is an appropriate assumption. And, you know, we're talking, I mean, I've got my traffic study out now. So pardon me for just a moment while I look at the number. We have seen that the 61 homes, there'd be about 70 trips a day that would use Second Street. And the reduction of having the new connection to McCaslin through the roundabout actually drops the existing traffic by at least that much, if not more. So I don't know if that answers the question or if you want me to go into any more detail. It's, it's a lot of numbers. So I'm hesitating putting anything up on the screen.
No, that was helpful. I just wanted to understand the assumptions you all were working with.
Yeah, we, we, we were, we did a couple of different iterations of this study with Alex because we wanted to make sure that, you know, something like this, a question like this came up. We had all the numbers in the study.
Lisa, just, this is Alex. Just to tap on that, you know, shopping trips are about 15% of, of total trips. And whether they all occur going to the, to the marketplace, some will certainly go over to the town center, some are going, going up to the Starbucks Superior Liquor area. So you have shopping trips that, you know, they're, they're only 10 or 15% of total trips. And there's multiple places where you, you would go. There's also recreational trips. There's Founders Park and so forth. And hopefully a lot of those trips are, are being made by the, the trail system by alternative mode. So that's why we, we, Chris and I sat down and we looked at this in detail about how things are going to go. And I think the roundabout is going to provide a much better way to get to US 36 than, than go up first all the way to, to Marshall and try to get on Marshall and make the, the left turn at Marshall to McCaslin. So that's why we felt that McCaslin was a, a better route.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. If, you know, kind of playing devil's advocate here, just so the neighbors maybe have an understanding of magnitude. If you guys are off by say 10, 10%, so let's look at, you know, maybe 10% to 20%. What would, what would the increase in, in, in numbers be? I don't have the traffic study in front of me.
Yeah, this is Chris. The We cottages are 61 units. That's about 575 trips. Let's call it 600 to be, make math easy. So if we were off 10% on 600 trips, that's 60 trips a day. You know, if that was spread over 10 hours, it'd be six an hour, one every 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further right now.
All right. There are no more questions. Then I guess I'm looking to close the public hearing and go into discussion. It is.
Before you do that, this is Bill Jenks, Ranch Capital and Second Avenue Superior Properties. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm sorry. I've been listening all night, but I wasn't on the microphone. So I thought I'd call in with the recent discussion and just give you a little bit of our two cents since, since I've been involved here also for the past four years. So you know, quickly, I, I've been working on the project since 2016. And which is also when I got involved across the street at downtown Superior. You know, we, I personally have held multiple design shreds with the, the neighbors and the local community there before Boulder Creek neighborhoods gotten, got involved here. And then obviously we, we let them lead that process for the past year and a half or so, since they've been under contract on the property. We did show you, I'm looking through my old notes here, I think in 2017, May, May 8th, 2017, we showed you a zoning compliant option for the property. And it was actually a town, a town board meeting that, that outlined, I think somewhere around 75 units for the property that met all of the requirements of the underlying zoning in terms of setbacks and streets and alleys and height. When, when Boulder Creek got involved, they originally were looking at that, that option sort of at our behest because we, we quite honestly didn't want to go through the, the PD process and ask for any variances. They fought ardently to be able to do this product, not, not necessarily because it's an economic advantage, but because they think it's a better, more attractive, more suitable project or product for the neighborhood. You know, these, these buildings are much smaller in scale than the allowed duplexes would be. And in terms of massing and height, you know, you have these, these much more traditional kind of cottage fronts that, that do look, you know, in a lot of ways, in a lot of scale, look like some of the older homes in, in, in original town. You know, I'll, I'll give you that obviously they're, they're much more densely populated than, than those, those were on larger lots. But Boulder Creek fought for this product because they believed it was a good response to the neighborhood. And they heard from the community and from staff that, that this was a better product. And all they're doing with the variance requests is bending, you know, it's a, it's a three foot height variance. And it really comes down to this, this lot size variance. All, all that does is let people own their own units instead of having to do a condo map or having tenants in common where you have a more complicated ownership structure. It's certainly doable under the existing by right and zoning without any discretion. We, we could go get a plat for 6,000 foot lots and put duplexes or triplexes on them. But I just want to give Boulder Creek credit for, I think, listening to the community thus far and trying to, you know, meet the project with a, with a product that, that is actually more architecturally appropriate for, for the neighborhood. So, you know, I just, long story short, I think Boulder Creek's done a great job and I think they do have an attractive product. And I understand that it is more dense than some people would like to see, but it's also relatively comparable to what's allowed by right without any of these variances that they're requesting, really just to make the project better. And I'm always, obviously here for any questions on, on our side. And I'm always, obviously here for any questions on, on our side or any way I can help too.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. And I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we can go into discussion. And with that, it is 10:15. So question is, does somebody just want to make a motion and do something? Or are you all comfortable with this? Or do we have discussions to be had?
I'm curious what the other commissioners think about parking, if they feel like we're going to be having an issue on parking. Just given that these aren't public streets, um, I think that's a concern. I'm interested in hearing from others. I'm.
We could maybe do a time, at least a time, quick time decision anyway. I'm not going to make it a whole lot longer. So, uh, I'm happy to let, you know, we can answer that question. But how late do we want to go? And that's probably question one, then, then let's go on to discussion or.
Sure. I'm, I'm fading fast as well. Um, I'd, I'd say 10:45 the latest.
Yeah, I was gonna say 10:30, but okay.
I would defer to my chairman.
10:30, 10:45, we can play around somewhere in between. Is that okay with everybody somewhere in between?
Works for me.
Depending on where, where, uh, where we're at. Okay. All right.
I'll go on parking.
Yes.
Parking. So it makes me a little nervous, but I, I guess I would like to see more communities err on the side of not enough parking than too much parking. And if this makes it so people have to go get in a storage unit somewhere else because they can't use their garage to store their car, or maybe it makes it so that they have one car instead of two for a household or two. Maybe they use Uber more. Great. Those are all good things in my mind. So I guess I'm willing to risk it.
I agree with you. I think the onus then comes to the HOA to maintain and manage this, that it has to be managed well for that to actually work.
Yeah. And I agree. I, I forget what developer said. It takes a few years, but the right people move in that can handle that parking.
I, I think this is a generational gap thing, but it's also a practical one. Before I moved into, to move to South Boulder, but to Superior, I lived in North Boulder. And the Boulder City Council was trying to do the same things with developments up there by providing one parking space for two cars. The net result was the cars were parked all over the streets, all over the, all the time. And it just really, in my mind, didn't work. I, I, I recognize that everybody says we should be using public transport. Boulder is, I mean, has tried desperately hard. They built 45 miles of bike paths to try and get people to use bikes. And I think bike ridership has gone up from about 10% to 12%. I, I would love to get people out of cars too, in principle. I have three of the damn things.
Any other thoughts on? On this or any other concerns?
No, I think from, from my standpoint, unfortunately I, I left town Thursday and then get back till yesterday. So I did, I was pretty far behind on, on reviewing this project. But I have, you know, I think it's a fantastic product. I, I, I think it's something that actually fits the area except for the side, the number of units. And, uh, you know, if it was like a 10% reduction in units, you know, we're, we're looking more at 56 or something like that, that might be more palatable. Um, and if you do that, then you can provide a little bit more parking, um, a little more open space, um, or pocket parks. I think that it would make it, uh, much easier for me to make a decision. But, uh, on the short, short review side for me tonight, I mean, all the discussion, the presentations by, you know, Stephen and, and the applicant, um, helped me understand it better. Um, and catch me up to speed. Um, it, it was unfortunate that it came out at 5:30 or 5:15 on a Friday. It was very difficult to, um, and, and so I had to play a quick catch up. And that's why I've been quiet most of the night is just trying to understand the scope of everything because I didn't get a chance to review this, um, in its entirety. So, um, I don't know. I, I think that if, if it was a 56, 55 unit product, um, I'd be more apt to just, have a discussion on going forward. But right now I'm still struggling with those numbers. And I don't know if I cut out on you guys because everybody's frozen.
Heard everything you had to say.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Well, if there's any other discussion, I'm going to propose we continue this. I'm, I'm not. Man, wow. Yeah. But it's up to you. Somebody wants to make a motion and see where it goes. That's cool too. If not, then I'm going to suggest we, we continue this hearing to a date certain and.
I don't have a lot more to discuss.
If you're, if you're asking for a motion to adjourn to another date, I would be happy to make that motion.
Oh, I, I mean, you're welcome to. I wanted to kind of get a, a head nod before we went that, went along that route. But I mean,
You know, I think we have a consensus to, to approve the motion.
Which one? Continue it or?
The first one.
I'll throw out a motion for approval. I mean, let's just see if I think if there's enough. I mean, I, I would like to go on record with my thoughts on the application, but, um, I don't know that at the end of the day, that matters. Um, I'll just say quickly, I hear you on the density thing. I've been going back and forth. I think Commissioner Reese with the same thing. You know, what is the, what's the impact we're going to mitigate by getting rid of five or six units? That's the question I can't answer. You know, if it's a traffic issue, I don't know that the number is going to be that much. It doesn't make the park a little bigger? Probably. What's the benefit? Bigger buffer from McCaslin. I don't know that that helps, you know, the neighbors in original town. It meets the zoning density. It meets the comp plan policy. I like the product. I'm with Ben. I could see myself wanting to live in something like this someday. Um, I'm happy to make a motion for approval, but I don't want to cut anybody else short just to see if we can end it here and just see where everyone's at.
There is a part of the comp plan policy that it does not meet.
What's that?
It's the residential medium density in the comp plan. As Mike Cooper said, allows for six to 12 dwelling units per acre. But it also says that the minimum lot size will be 3,000 square feet. And the minimum lot size in this is 1,500 square feet and the maximum lot size is about 2,000 square feet. And that's why these, I mean, the concern I have is that these, uh, houses are pushed so close together. I, I would like to see the lots increased in size so that the houses are a bit further apart. But when I went to look at these, my first reaction was this is all concrete and rock. I couldn't see where kids were going to play. I couldn't see where you put a barbecue. I couldn't see where you put a basketball hoop. This was not family, this was clearly not family friendly. And as Mike Cooper has said, it's not really intended to be family friendly. But I think Superior generally thinks it is family friendly. And if we're going to move away from that, I think it ought to be taken into consideration.
Do you feel that the open space offsets the smaller yards, the pocket park and the big common space?
Not in this particular development because so much of the open space is just separating from the buildings from McCaslin. And that open space is not going to be used very much by anybody.
And I mean, 4.5 point A, you know, new developments in the vicinity. I assume this is in the vicinity, maybe not. Acknowledge and use traditional setbacks, building orientation, building mass and roof form. Avoid pass through or out of neighborhood traffic through original Superior. This will definitely impact those. It's not traditional setbacks. It's not traditional building orientations. I'm sorry, but I, I know you got yourself a 1400 square foot setback, or I'm sorry, 14 square foot footprint, but I, we've gone through and counted the number of one story and two story homes in original town. I think there's one, three story. And not very many two stories. Most of them are one story, but, um, and I know we can't match that. I'm not suggesting that, but, I mean, you want to, you want to start picking away at the comp plan. I, I, we can sit and do that. There, there are equal number of policies that I think it, it goes against.
The one I like that it goes towards is, I don't know if it says diversity of housing types or something like that, because that's one thing my wife and I talk about Superior. As much as we love it, we, we do feel it's pretty dated in, in many ways. That's if you're a, you know, a nuclear family with your three kids like we are, who want a three to 4,000 square foot house in a large yard, you're golden. But this is a, this is kind of the opposite part of that. And, and I think that's needed more in Superior. And so I guess I'm excited to see that being proposed.
Yep.
I thought about that somewhat too, Ben, because of Commissioner Malia, because I kind of agree with you. But, but at some point, uh, many of those nuclear families that are a couple turn into families like yours. And I, I'm a little doubtful about restricting, uh, or if you like, forcing them to move because, uh, of the way these houses are built. It might be a good idea. I just haven't figured it out yet.
Well, I, I guess I can address that purpose. I've, I've moved, I've had two houses prior to having kids and, and I think people are delaying having kids. So you've probably got a good 10 years worth of maybe homeownership before that's an issue sometimes these days.
Your experience is much more relevant than mine.
And I don't know that we want to plan for kind of everyone's biggest situation. I think, you know, I think it's okay to move in life, right? Commissioner Harper, you know, you recently moved. I'm not going to live where I live forever. So I don't know that we want to say, you know, just because somebody has a family at some point in time, that every house should be able to accommodate a family all the time. So, you know, I think, I think it's okay to have that transition.
I, I agree with that. It's just really a question of at what point you should start. I mean, the very first house I bought, I was able to buy because it was actually very like, um, old townhouse. It was a thousand square feet. But it was on a 6,000 square feet lot. It only had two bedrooms and one bathroom. And the owner was selling it because they just had their first child and they felt they needed more room. Uh, okay. Yeah. I, I thought it was a pity that they wanted to sell the house because they wanted more room.
You're not throwing my last comment. And run this along. That's fine. You know, the Rock Creek development was a fully planned community, fully thought out with the exception of downtown. And so all the homes are protected. Shopping centers are in the right place. All designed to, you know, keep your values up and give you a quality of life that you could depend on. And the original town neighborhood has absorbed all these just development plans that, that come forward for people who own properties. And we don't do planning and we just react to the development that gets dropped around us. And no, nothing against Sagamore Banner Ben, but Sagamore was, we looked at that. I'm like, oh my God, what'd you just do? You know, when we sat here, that was the first one, you know, and then, then we got Coal Creek Crossing right next to us, completely different, totally different housing. Love the people over there. It's a very nice neighborhood. But then that was done. At first, of course, was the Surrah District, right? Which we fought really hard to get cut back to something. I mean, it was probably one in, one and a third of what, it's probably like two thirds of what it was originally proposed to be. And we're going to have to react to, um, RTD and
Yeah, I'm on mute.
Along 36, where, where we have, all we do is sit and react and react and react to development after development without any planning. Northwest area plan that I tried to push through, couldn't get any, any teeth on that. So we sit here and we have to react and it's not thoughtful and it's not planned. And we don't know what the impact is going to be. And, you know, traffic studies don't take into account the neighbor that drove up the street and said, oh yeah, I go this way because it's a pretty drive. That's why they come up here. It's a pretty drive. You know, and we asked them, please, can you just chill? Cause the traffic coming up our, our street just continues to increase and continues to increase. And it will continue to do that. And all the neighbors who live in this neighborhood, all of us don't mind our neighbors coming in, but it's getting to be too much. And we don't get the benefit of a planned development that was sitting Rock Creek. And we don't have, I'm sorry, Stephen, I, I, I'm picking on, on staff, but we don't have this, either the staff capability or the staff desire or the board desire. I don't know what it is to plan and respond and encourage and be thoughtful in a way that was done with the Rock Creek Ranch developments. So that's my last thing to say. Um, I'd say go ahead and approve it. Most of us, I, I suspect a number of us are going to just move out of here because it's, it's just going to get ridiculous. You just keep adding houses and houses and houses and you're going to keep doing it. And so anyway, that's not planning. In my opinion, that's, that's reaction. I'll be quiet. If somebody wants to make it, I'm not going to make a motion tonight. I usually do it. And if somebody wants to do it, they'll need to go pull it themselves. I'm not comfortable doing that tonight.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion for approval then. It sounds like, um, if there's further discussion, it can come out if we're not in agreement, but looks like the first would be Resolution PC dash seven. Recommending approval of the planned development to rezone Rogers Farm subdivision from medium density, medium density residential and agricultural urban reserve to planned development.
So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
My second.
Second by Commissioner Malia. You want to do a roll call vote, Martin?
Yes. Chairman Cool.
I know.
Vice Chair Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Harper.
I am very uncomfortable with this process. I mean, this is a major development for the town. And we're just cutting it off discussion and moving to a vote.
We don't have to take a vote. I just was, it was, we don't have, we can table the motion. You don't have, we don't have to vote if y'all aren't ready. I just was responding to the chair.
I mean, I, I think, uh, I mean, if we're not, I mean, it's clear that there is some level of discomfort with the plan as proposed. I mean, if we were going to go back with suggestions about what, shouldn't we be considering suggestions about what might make it or what we think might improve it, uh, rather than just either saying yes or no. I mean, it seems to me that we are sort of failing in our responsibility by taking this course.
Commissioner Harper and, and for the rest of the commissioners, I, I agree. I'm uncomfortable with this as well. I think the economical aspect of 61 homes is the best we're going to get. I, I think Boulder Creek neighborhoods has put the time and the effort in to come up with a good plan, a good alternative. And that's, it's, I would like to see less homes. I heard all of our residents who called in, who have emailed us, uh, who've emailed us during this meeting. I, I hear you. But it's not my opinion whether they do 61 homes, 89 homes or 32 homes. They do 32 homes. It's not economically feasible. They're not going to do it. So then it's just going to sit there. And, uh, what is it? Douglas will never get finished. That whole side of McCaslin will, won't ever get finished. Finished.
Something might happen someday. I mean, you don't know that.
Someday, but we have, well, we have a, we have a we have a bird in the hand instead of one, two in the bush.
And we didn't develop a thing. And now all of a sudden we are developing every single plots or parcel.
It's because we're the south, we're the southeast corner of Boulder County.
You know, we can say, no, we're allowed to do that, especially.
I, I, I think that this area will get developed and I think it should get developed, but the, I mean, there have been changes to development plans before. If you think back to, I think it was block 24 over in downtown, that was substantially changed because actually it was just before I joined the planning commission that it was changed. But, uh, I mean, the board didn't like what came through. And they changed it and new plans were drawn up for it. I don't think at this point, I mean, nowadays drawings are produced by CAD machines. You can change it in about 10 seconds flat. I'm not saying it's very easy to do, uh, but if we have some good, if there are proposals that people would like to put, put forward, then I, I think it's part of our responsibility or it would seem to me to be part of our responsibility to put them forward. Just saying it's 10:30, we want to stop, uh, we want to vote on this. I mean, just doesn't apply to me quite honestly.
We can table the motion.
I'm okay voting or tabling. I guess the one thing I'd like to clarify is yes, we can say no, but we can't say no just because our personal opinion, we don't like. no just because our personal opinion, we don't like the project. Because I would have voted no on the last couple, the last meeting if that was the case.
Yes, I think you can in this case.
I, I have my reasons, so, and I, and I said them and I articulated them, so, I mean, but, I mean, that's, yeah, well, I'm okay, whatever you guys want to do, so I'm, there is a, there's a motion on the table, so.
I would like to table the motion.
Depends whether there's a, I don't know what to do here, Dan. I'm not sure what the, what the right thing to do is if we have a motion on the table with a second.
Yep, there's a motion, there's a second, it's a pending motion, so I would just suggest you go through, take a roll call vote, you know, if it fails, you can always reconsider it at the, the next meeting.
And we have two other motions that don't have to happen tonight, I guess, but if we do this, then we're, we are, we are approving the PD and the zoning change and it's kind of done, so.
If there's more discussion, I'm happy with to rescind the motion to approve. If there's more legitimate discussion, I in no way want the residents to feel rushed. If the commissioners have more to discuss and there's more we need to talk through, I will, I'll rescind. So I'll, I mean, we'll, we'll back off that and maybe let's talk about a motion to continue.
Is that acceptable, Dan?
That's fine, if you want to rescind your, your motion.
Okay.
All right. So then I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain. Stephen, do we need to look at?
The next, the next public meeting's July 7th and you guys will have another item to consider, it's just the rezoning of the Century Link Parcel. So hopefully everybody understands that the town acquired the Century Link Parcel recently, 180-acre piece in the southern portion of town. It's currently part of Rock Creek Ranch and it's owned RAC, I think, but it's going to get rezoned to just open space, natural area as part of, I think the agreement with conservation easements and whatnot, that it gets rezoned that way. So that's, it's a fairly straightforward application, I wouldn't feel too daunted by adding this to that agenda on the 7th.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to the next meeting, which is July the 7th.
My only, I guess, caveat there is that this was supposed to be Jason's last meeting, so Commissioners Witty and Harden would have the opportunity to review the, these, the video and then catch themselves up and then kind of clarify that they watched the video before the start of the next meeting in order to participate in that discussion on the 7th, particularly if Jason's not going to be here, so.
You plan to not be here?
He's tried to give his nose.
I missed like the last two minutes because my internet cut out and all I heard was.
We were, we were continuing, we made a motion to, or I made a motion to continue the hearing to July 7th, but your term, you know, you, you.
Your term's up, so I didn't know if you were going to be here in July or not.
Stay on, I mean, whatever you'd like to do, so.
I've, I've really got to step aside and focus on the high school softball program.
That's cool. All right, so there's a motion on the table. All right, we have a second and, Bart, you want to do a roll call vote?
Sure. Chairman Cool.
Yes, yes.
Vice Chair Ritchie.
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Harper.
Yes.
Commissioner Malia.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that's that, we'll just do this on the, on the 7th, so. Hang on, let me get back over the agenda, see if there's anything else for tonight. Are there any staff announcements, Stephen?
I have a motion on July 7th.
Yeah, hang on, let me just, thank you to Mike and Bill and everybody who participated, so thank you for joining us, we'll come back together on the 7th and continue our discussions.
Only other update besides the meeting on the 7th was just that the town board had a meeting last night and they discussed the park at Rock Creek application, it's the second meeting that they had on that, they continued that meeting to next Monday's work session, so they'll discuss that at the beginning of the work session at 6 o'clock next Monday. Two other items were on that, one was the Cobell plat for Superior Shores, that got continued to July 13th, I believe, and then there was the concept plan meeting that we invited you guys to. They did not continue that to a date certain and we've had that application withdrawn for a concept meeting, so that will not be rescheduled at this time.
All righty, babe, anything else?
Yeah, just, just real quick, I just want to thank everybody for several or many years of partnerships and just, I think we've accomplished a lot of great things while I was on the Planning Commission, so that's attributable to everybody on this call, so I appreciate everything and I may be back.
We will miss you and come back soon if you're thinking about it.
Yes, come back if you think about it. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason, good luck with your softball team.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool.
Yeah, thank you, Jason, and thank you, Stephen. I mean, this is your second night running presumably, I thought you were remarkably cool, calm and collected, all things considered, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Very much, thank you.
All right, so everybody have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.